I was talking, but I was unmuted.
Did you get both of the emails?
About the public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I got them printed out. Although I need to cross out the.
Okay. We are now live, and so I'd like to call this regular board meeting of the Albemarle County Public School Board to order on July 9. First thing I would like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Okay, let's, before we go into the body of the meeting, just a few items. First, a microphone check. And, oh, and before I do that, just so I can explain this to our newest member, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Malani Burkhart, who is joining us for the first time as the very first student representative to the Albemarle County School Board.
Hey, Malani.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Albemarle County School Board. My name is Malani Burkhart, and I will be a rising junior at Monticello High School. I am deeply honored to accept this appointment as the first non-voting student representative to the Albemarle County School Board. I hope that by the time my three-month term ends, that our engagement will have been positive and thought-provoking, and just above all, rewarding for this body. And just once again, I'm very excited for this new learning experience, and I'm excited to work with you all.
Malani, thanks so much for that. You are very, very welcome to be here with us. And Malani, one of the things we do first is to do a microphone check so that people who are tuning in know whose voices, which voices belong to everybody, to each person. So I'm going to go around and call each person. And typically, the school board members will state their name and then their magisterial district. So without further ado, Mr. Page.
Graham Page, Samuel Muller District.
Mrs. Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Dr. Akoff.
Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District.
Ms. Lee.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ms. Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Mr. Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Guayhama Magisterial District.
Ms. Burkhardt. Go ahead and unmute, and just give us your name and that you're the student representative.
Malani Burkhart, I'm the student representative.
Thank you. Dr. Haas.
I want you to know, Malani, we've never, as a board, ever messed up the mute button.
No pressure, though. Now, Dr. Haas.
Evening, Matt Haas, Superintendent.
Ms. Collins.
Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Dr. Kaiser.
Dr. Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Dr. Hairston.
Good evening, everyone. Bernard Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Dr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning.
Dr. Diggs.
Good evening, Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Mr. Jeramita.
Phil Jeramita, Strategic Communications Officer.
Ms. Schmidt.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Mr. Holden.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Next up, I will read for the record and for the minutes of this meeting, which should so reflect that the meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Albemarle County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being streamed live on the Albemarle County Public Schools website, and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. At this time, I am announcing that I'm stepping down as the Chair of the Albemarle County School Board effective immediately. I will not be stepping down from the school board itself, and I look forward to serving out the last three and a half years of my term. This is simply a change of seat at the table. As I'm sure is the case for other entrepreneurs in these times, personal business projects that I thought were on autopilot are actually not. They need my focus and attention as they are of significant importance to my family's future, future well-being. I simply cannot dedicate the time required to make each role a success, so I've made this tough choice. Thank you for your support to the members of the school board and to Dr. Haas and his magnificent team. As well as a special thank you to Jennifer Johnston, who's helped me every step of the way in the last three and a half years as Vice Chair and as Chair. I appreciate you all, and I look forward to our continued work together. So that having been said, I have two other quick things to say. First, I open the floor for nominations for a new Chair of the Albemarle County School Board. Secondly, taking personal privilege this once, it is my distinct honor to nominate Mr. Graham Page to be our next Chair. Mr. Page is a lifelong resident of Albemarle County and has a 25-year background as a science teacher in county schools. Mr. Page has served with honor and distinction as Vice Chair for the last 18 months. I know that he will be a strong and outstanding Chair and leader of our school board. I'm going to make a motion, and I'd like to ask for a second, and then I'll ask if there are any other nominations. I move that we appoint Graham Page to be the next Chair of the Albemarle County Public School Board effective immediately.
Second.
Are there any other nominations at this time?
I move that we close and vote.
The nominations are closed. Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Oberg.
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Absolutely, yes. Congratulations, Mr. Page. I turn the virtual gavel over to you, sir, with great pride. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Alcarro.
Yay!
And thank you for your leadership over the last two years, roughly. The board truly appreciates the service that you provided, and we know that you, as you stated, will still be with us in service to the students and the staff of Albemarle County Public Schools. So once again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
You're awesome, Jana.
We are now open for nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair? I would like to nominate Ms. Katrina Carlson as Vice Chair of the Albemarle County School Board. Ms. Carlson has a strong background in law, education, and children's issues. Her two and a half years on the board have shown her insight, experience, and commitment to representing not only the students in Rio District, but to all Albemarle County Public School students. Is, is, well, there it is. She has been a great asset and will continue to be to the school board, and I look forward to her doing a great job as Vice Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we have Katrina Carlson as our Vice Chair. There any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mrs. Johnson?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Absolutely, yes, as well.
I just want to point out that I was your mentor, so I'm not.
Okay, well, she acknowledges that, I think. All right, now moving down to approval of the agenda, could I have a motion in a second to approve our agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Oberg, second by Mr. Alcarro. Any discussion on that motion? If not, Mrs. Johnson, roll call, please.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Question passed.
Okay, we approved the agenda. Now we need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I may, first, congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we read the language that allows us to hold this meeting electronically. If.
I thought.
I can send it to.
We already did.
I thought Mr. Alcarro did. He did.
I already, I already did, Ross.
That's already been done.
Then I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry for human interruption.
Okay. All right, so a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
I would like to pull some items. Procedurally, when do I say that?
Um.
Now.
Do we get the motion? All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so moved by Dr. Akoff's second basis, Mrs. Carlson, to approve consent agenda. And you were saying you wanted to remove one item from the agenda?
Yeah, I wanted to pull 3.4, just for a quick comment.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll hear your comment, and then we'll have the vote, so.
Yeah, there's a lot in this consent agenda, so it's a great, I'm happy with everything that's there. The only thing I wanted to pull for the policy reviews and revisions is that I know we spent a lot of time working on the equity checklist for when we're reviewing our policies. And last year, I asked if we were implementing it, and I realized that it'd be, I think what I would like to see is on that, I wrote this down somewhere, but I don't have it. You know, on the index where we have the checklist of what changes were being made? I think it'd be really easy to add a column that says, did we put this in the equity, through the equity checklist that we spent all that time developing? And Jennifer, I know you said that we do it, but it's just really hard, and I would like that kind of confirmation and proof that somebody's looking at it with equity in mind, because like, there's our student suspension policy is one of the ones that was amended on there. We made a great change on it where all student suspensions have to be reported to Matt. And I don't know. Thoughts from the board? I think that'd be a nice.
I agree.
Okay.
It is listed at the top of the index, because all of them have been through the equity checklist.
Doesn't?
It is at the top of the list?
There's an asterisk, and I quite frankly, never saw it before. There absolutely is. I'm sorry. I never saw it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I would still push and say I would like to see it for each one, and if there's been any like, changes or anything, you know, if we could like, put a note if there's something that came up, because that, that I see, but also, I could imagine. I know it's just in my head, but I just, that looks like it could be there as the intro, and it doesn't matter, you know, it's not actually someone having to go and check each one. That's just like the header.
It could be a checkbox, right? I mean.
We can put a checkbox, and then if changes were made based on those discussions, we can add that in.
That, I would love that, just so that it like, flags it to me that we were, changed something because of the equity checklist. Thank you, Jennifer.
See, that's why she's the Vice Chair.
Right, thank you, Vice Chair and Mrs. Johnston. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. And I guess this motion is being amended to include what Mrs. Carlson suggested at the Chair's request. Is that okay with the motion presenter, Mrs. Akoff? You all right? Are you all right? Okay, all right, so with that addition, what Mrs. Carlson?
This chair, part of our, I think it has to be, I think we have to deal with the motion.
And then?
The agenda, and I would suggest we file, we make a motion that in the future that category be added to.
Okay, so that motion to be in order, then after we vote on the first motion, right?
It would be prospective for all further, future revisions of our policies.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so with the original motion, Mrs. Johnston, we are ready to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, so Mrs. Carlson, could you make a motion with your suggestions included in that motion as for future consent agenda items? Or policy review items, rather?
So let me think about this. So I move that on future policy review index sheets, we include a column that mentions the equity checklist and calls attention to the fact that there were any changes made because of that.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded that any, that we have with our future revisions, a column added to reflect that it's been checked with the equity checklist and whether or not any changes have been made. Are there any discussion on that motion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Johnston?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Question passed.
Okay. All right, moving on, we are now ready for our public comment. And our new Vice Chair, Mrs. Carlson. Public comment.
Hello, everyone. Fix my screen real quick, sorry. So I'll go ahead and read the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Albemarle County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the County of Albemarle, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment, and for this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments may be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and will be given to all of the school board members for review. Second, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the school board meeting may sign up online at www.k12albemarle.org/board by 4:00 PM the day before the meeting. The clerk will email Zoom links to the speakers on the day of the meeting so that they can log in to provide comment. Before electronic public comment commences, the Vice Chair will announce the order in which the speakers will comment. Am I supposed to be reading all this grammar, or is this just procedure?
Yeah, yeah, read it for the record.
Okay, before electronic public comment commences, the Vice Chair will announce the order in which the speakers will comment. Those giving public comment will initially be admitted to a waiting room area on Zoom until it's their turn to speak. They will be able to hear the meeting in progress while they wait. Each speaker's access to public comment will be activated when it's that speaker's turn to provide comment to the members of the school board. Note, for all those listening in the waiting room, last time there was a delay, and so you might have to wait a minute to hear before you start speaking, because that caused issues two weeks ago. Speakers will be notified when they reach a two-minute mark, and at the three-minute mark, the speaker's Zoom link will automatically be deactivated. Upon instructions from the Chair, the clerk has the ability to disconnect the speaker who is disruptive, profane, or fails to abide by these guidelines. Speakers during the meeting, or those submitting written comments, should state their name and their address, our magisterial district. Speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. And lastly, although the school board will not respond to comments during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business.
Okay, yeah, one other thing to add in. For tonight, since we have quite a few speakers, we did reduce the time to two minutes rather than three. So our speakers will receive a warning at one minute, and each speaker is limited to two. So, Miss Carlson, you want to call our speakers in order?
Yep, so the first three, just so they have a heads up, is going to be Amanda Vogel, Tim Klobuchar, and Matthew Christensen. First up is Amanda Vogel.
It does not look like she is in the waiting room or at the meeting, so I would get to the next.
Maybe we can check back at the end. Second is Tim Klobuchar.
Hi, my name is Tim Klobuchar. I am an English teacher at Monticello High School with nearly 20 years of teaching experience, and I have three children in the ACPS system, two at Brownsville Elementary and one soon to be at Henley Middle. As of right now, I don't feel safe, and I don't feel my children are safe going into ACPS schools for face-to-face learning in the fall. If we do go back in any capacity, I support the recommendations in the petition circulated by the ACEA requiring mask use for staff and students with masks provided by ACPS, allowing teachers to opt into online-only teaching, and helping pay for childcare for teachers. In addition, I believe we need firm guidelines in place on how schools will act in the event of a teacher or student testing positive for COVID-19. For example, who gets quarantined or tested, and who pays for testing. However, due to lack of funding, I don't think these recommendations will be able to be followed. Therefore, I think the best solution is opening the school year in an online-only format. Nearly all of the recommended policies that would promote the health and safety of our students and staff require money that ACPS and the state government don't have, and the federal government is unwilling to provide. Teachers will already be working more days than last year with no step increase in pay from last year, so we know the money likely isn't there to take these additional steps to make anyone who attends or works in our schools, including custodians, cafeteria workers, and other essential workers, feel safe. We also know that despite the fact the United States has one of the worst coronavirus infection rates in the world, there has been a concerted push for schools to reopen as usual in the fall. Everyone seems to be in agreement that getting schools to reopen normally is essential to rejuvenating the economy, but hardly anyone in an influential position has seemed to acknowledge that bringing the virus under control is essential to reopening schools safely. I came across this sentiment yesterday that I think sums it up best. Quote, "Every single problem we're dealing with now stems from the fact that we never actually suppressed the virus and then put the infrastructure in place to keep it suppressed. It's like we're trying to figure out a way to live in a burning building. It doesn't work," unquote. So I think the board needs to consider reopening in an online-only format until the fire has been extinguished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klobuchar. Jennifer, I had a quick question. Am I supposed to be timing things?
I have the timer. Did you not hear the beep?
No, but I'll look for you to be like, no.
I'll hold my hand up then.
Next up, I saw in the chat that I think Amanda Vogel might be here.
Yes.
Oh, she did not want to speak, so she sent in her statement. Okay.
In the waiting room.
Okay.
Tell me to admit her.
The comment says she doesn't want to speak, so if she wants to comment and speak, we can, we can let her do it next, or after the next person. Next up is Matthew Christensen.
My name is Matthew Christensen in the Rio District. We praise teachers amazed at how they can accomplish so much with so little. We heap accolades upon them. We thank them for their tireless efforts to provide the best possible education, care, and support for our children. And we pay them like crap. Our teachers are, in fact, superheroes, but they don't actually have superpowers. They can still get sick, they still need to pay rent or mortgage, and they still need to pay to eat, not to mention all of the countless other expenses life throws their way, and the classroom and cleaning supplies we already asked them to pay for out of their own pocket. We need to give our teachers the support and compensation they deserve. The current plan, the current leave plan asks our teachers to make significant sacrifices and to take very serious risks, both in their health and financially. The leave policy looks to me like a lot of teachers are going to be left without pay when something goes wrong. With how little we pay teachers already, they really don't have much room to miss paychecks, so I imagine some will be forced to work even if they're sick. How many dead teachers is an acceptable number? How many dead students? Kids are resilient, yes. They're not dropping at the rate of their more elderly relatives, but they're not invincible. It will be impossible to contain an outbreak. They will get sick, they will spread it to people, and more people will die. This is not an easy situation to be in. As a social worker, I'm somewhat familiar with the developmental needs children have. There is no easy answer. This is an extremely complex issue. But we cannot sacrifice one of our greatest treasures, our teachers, for the sake of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I do see Amanda Vogel, so we can go to her and see if she wants to provide comment.
Oh, hi, thanks. My main question is, as we move forward and look at whatever our next steps are going to be, that there's a plan in place to support teachers as we're going to be working four to five days a week, and our children won't be, and most teacher salaries don't match the financial burden of childcare. Specifically, looking also at part-time teachers, there are a lot of teachers that are part-time, and when benefits leave or decided, they're normally left out of that, or they don't have the same opportunities. So when coming up with those systems, to remember the part-time teachers as well.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. Next up, the next three, just so that they're ready, are Vicky Hopson, Mary McIntyre, and Lori Anne Stoddard. So first up is Vicky Hopson.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Vicky Hopson, and I live in the Whitehall Magisterial District. My husband and I both work for ACPS and have children in the schools. I am deeply connected and dedicated to our school system, and I'm here to urge you to reopen schools virtually. Schools require a large number of adults to make them run, and when the calls for schools to open are made, there remains very little attention and consideration paid to the opinions, expertise, and feelings of bus drivers, custodial staff, food service workers, and teachers. I have spoken with numerous teachers who feel unvalued and who are frankly terrified to return to work. To have the time to plan, we urge you to vote to open school virtually. Reason one, according to numerous experts, the long-term health implications for those who become infected with COVID-19 are unknown. COVID is now known to cause long heart, kidney, brain, and clotting system complications. Reason two, those same experts agree that children could serve as vectors for transmission. Reason three, cases are surging here and across the country. The world is slowly closing its borders to us. UVA is resuming here in August, and until there is widespread testing and contact tracing, opening face-to-face is simply unsafe. Reason four, reopening schools, even with PPE and distancing, is unsafe. See China, and Israel, and even Arizona. Today, it was reported that three teachers in Arizona, all following CDC guidelines, were infected during summer school and one died. Reason five, healthcare professionals who work in the COVID units and ERs and in the UVA COVID testing lab are refusing to send their children to school. One says, "The teachers and staff, my God, how can we ask this of them? After cautiously sheltering in place for months, we are now asking them to basically jump into the lion's den and interact with hundreds of children with thousands of household contacts. The more exposure you have, the more risk you have. Trust me, we will see teachers and bus drivers and cafeteria workers and other staff and their family members who get sick and die. Any plan that involves more in-person time also puts kids and teachers more at risk." In closing, it is worth noting that having this meeting face-to-face is too dangerous. However, we are expecting teachers and other staff members to return face-to-face in two short months. I urge the board to think deeply about the very real life-or-death sacrifice we are asking teachers to make. Please begin the conversation now with community partners about how to support families. That will be a challenging transition. Thank you.
Next up is Mary McIntyre.
Hello, I'm Mary McIntyre. I'm in the Rio District. I'm a teacher and a parent of two students. Frankly, I am dismayed that none of the former teachers who work in the central office spoke up before this point to say that we should adhere from all teachers about this plan. Having it kept from us until today felt very hurtful and disrespectful. from us until today felt very hurtful and disrespectful. We are the ones who have to execute your plan. Execute seems like an appropriate word for this. If it is so safe for us to return to school, why aren't you having your meetings in person? Why is the COB still closed? You are actually asking us to do something you refuse to do yourself. If it's so safe, I expect to see every one of you walking the halls on the first day of school and sending your own kids back. My parents are both retired teachers who have survived cancer, a heart attack, and a teenage me. We self-isolated for two weeks in June so we could go visit them safely. Once school starts in person, that will be impossible. It might be July 2021, when I safely hug my parents again. Have you thought about that sacrifice? In the COVID town hall in May, Dr. Underwood from the governor's office said that decisions would be guided by data and not dates. Really? A few days ago, they arbitrarily decided that three feet away is totally fine for kids. If six feet doesn't work, you want to use temperature to screen people when some infected people never get a fever. There are still too many unknowns and not enough data and testing. Your own planning guide says, "We will advise employees of their options if they have trepidation about returning to work, and they may apply for accommodations that will allow them to work." Who among us doesn't have trepidation? What if every teacher you have insisted use evidence-based practices, and every teacher you didn't bother to survey, every teacher is scared as I am that you are making us guinea pigs in an experiment? What if we say no? We will not risk ourselves, our children, families, students, and coworkers when there is an alternative. What if the majority of Albemarle teachers request accommodations to teach virtually? We are trying to survive to see the end of this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is Lori Ann Stoddard.
Hello, I'm Lori Ann Stoddard. I'm in the Scottsville District, and I'm speaking on behalf of Jeff Handler and Helen Miller. We've all penned this statement together. I'm here to advocate for teachers and families who are left out of the planning for the safe opening of our schools. Many teachers are concerned with the lack of transparency and lack of diverse representation on the division's task force work groups. The community members who are most at risk were represented the least in these groups, namely teachers, families, and students. It is an illusion that all stakeholders were present. With over 1,300 teachers in our division of the 79 members of these task forces, only 15 were teachers. Zero parents or students were included. Elementary teachers face unique dangers within the school building during this pandemic. Yet only six elementary teachers were included. In a group of 79 people, how much voice do teachers have when there are only a handful present? The two options for teaching are hybrid teaching, I'm sorry, hybrid learning, which engenders the health of teachers, students, and their families, rather than the inconvenience of at-home learning. At-home learning may inconvenience everyone, but it is objectively far less physically dangerous. Meeting in person is an imposed risk, not a necessary one. It is a higher risk for people of color, older teachers, and especially elementary school teachers and students, where many of the proposed safety procedures are not developmentally feasible. Teachers want to teach and be with their students. That is not in question. The question is why the county administration is pushing us to meet in person when so much is still unknown about this disease's spread and learned long-term effects on health cases in the U.S. are still rising. We will begin school right after UVA students return from all over the world. Students are not immune to the health risks of gatherings in other enclosed public spaces. Teachers are being told to risk their well-being right now. Our division should really be focused on how to provide equitable, excellent at-home instruction until it is safe for everyone to meet again in person.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Sorry, next up we have Sheeka Sewall, Catherine Lowe, and Susan Carter. So first up will be Sheeka Sewall. Jennifer, is she in the room?
No, it doesn't look like it.
Okay, we'll try to loop back at the end. Next up will be Catherine Lowe.
Hi. Hi, I'm Kat Lowe, and I'm a parent as well as I am a teacher at Holy Middle School. And thank you, first of all, for letting me speak tonight. In recent weeks, as states like Florida and Texas and North Carolina have begun to lessen their restrictions on everything from beaches to bars, suddenly those states have seen an increase in cases of COVID, and unfortunately, my family has been affected by COVID as a result. My niece, my 27-year-old niece, now is stricken with COVID, and a family member is now on a ventilator. And as a result of that, I felt like I could not stay quiet any longer. I've been worried for a while about what I was going to do about going back in September, because I have a son who's disabled. I've spent the last 23 years keeping him alive. He has a rare genetic disorder, and he works every day to keep his health stable, and we have decided to send him to a group home to keep him away from me so that I don't put his health at risk. So I am asking the board to consider at least possibly keeping the sixth through 12th grade students primarily virtual so that I help keep our family and families like my own as risk-free as possible. Our students are exposing families. We don't know how far-reaching we are. You know, every family touches another family and touches another family. I'm not saying this as eloquently as I had prepared. I apologize, but we simply just don't know enough about this.
You're doing great, but that's it for time. Thank you for sharing your thoughts, Ms. Lowe. Next up will be Susan Carter.
Good evening. I am Susan Carter, an Albemarle County school bus driver. Drivers are the frontline workers with safety being the paramount concern. We have concerns about performing our duties safely during this pandemic. We ask that the wearing of face masks be made a requirement for all unless one has a documented medical condition that prevents safe masking. We ask for ACPS to provide masks to all students and staff to guarantee that all members of the ACPS family, not just those who can afford PPE, are safe. Drivers and assistants cannot socially distance from students. Thus, the appropriate PPE for them includes both masks and face shields. These items, along with cleaning and sanitation supplies, must be provided to them. We cannot afford to provide these items ourselves and will be unable to work safely without them. Additionally, local transit buses have been retrofitted with Plexiglas barriers between drivers and passengers. Presently, regulations prohibit these on school buses. We ask that you take action to seek changes in these regulations to allow for increased driver safety. We also have concerns about the ventilation on buses. Evidence indicates that HVAC systems spread droplets in closed areas. Many students and drivers have health needs that require AC use on the buses, which is at odds with the medical advice to keep windows open to allow for fresh air. We know long hours have been spent considering all possible scenarios, and we appreciate your hard work and thoughtfulness. We also know that the only way for us to feel confident in returning to work will be to have open and transparent discussions with employees and leadership. To that end, we have emailed the board a statement signed by many drivers and a number of questions collected from drivers that we hope will be included in future planning and decision-making. All of us are eager to assist with planning by sharing our thoughts and perspectives. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
The next three will be Donna Evans, Chris Bunyan, and Emily Maiton. So first up, Donna Evans.
Okay. Hello, I'm Donna Evans. I'm a teacher with Albemarle County Public Schools, and I live in the Wright Bennett District. Despite the great risks that are associated with the pandemic, we are returning to school in September. I'm sure all of you understand these risks, and school board meetings are now held virtually. Also, I understand the political and economic pressures that are pushing for the reopening of the schools. In order to reopen, we need to follow scientifically-based safety precautions. The students should wear a mask in the classroom and not just in the hallways. We will need to provide students with masks that cannot acquire them. We need to socially distance by six feet at all times. We need to be provided with disinfectants in our classrooms to clean surfaces between classes. We need hand washing, hand sanitizers easily available for everyone in the building. Students will not be able to share art materials as they do in the art room. We need to have a plan to keep high-risk faculty, staff, and students completely safe while in the building. We need a plan for what will happen when someone in our school community is diagnosed with COVID. In ending, we need to be extremely safe and precautious to avoid any hospitalizations or even more horrifying deaths from COVID. Please keep safety in your mind when supporting the reopening of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next up will be Chris Bunyan.
Well, it looks like Bunyan, but it sounds like Bunin, so thank you. That's all right.
I'm realizing this is a bad role for me. I'm going to mispronounce so many names. I'm sorry.
You have no idea what I hear, though, on the first day of school from students, and even on the last day of school, so I understand. All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Chris Bunin, and I teach at Albemarle High School. My wife, Elizabeth, teaches at Stone Robinson, and my children will be joining us next year in Albemarle County schools. We live in Nelson County with Albemarle County Afton Views. I first want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Haas and each of you for the time and energy and the support you've provided to teachers, staff, and students during the spring of 2020. Everything from moving instruction online to managing the end of the school year and changing the start date was handled thoughtfully and carefully, so I thank you. I'm also here to share some thoughts and questions regarding the reopening of schools. I know we all agree that learning spaces need to be safe spaces that offer peace of mind, promotes learning, and protects our health and safety. Based on my calculations, our schools are some of the most densely populated places in our communities. Conservatively speaking, AHS's daily population density at half-capacity will be 1,000 people in an area of .02 square miles. That is 50,000 people per square mile. This is more densely populated than most nursing homes and cruise ships, and most of our schools have many interior rooms with limited ventilation. So here are some of the questions I have. How is ACPS going to provide the required CDC measures that promotes learning and protects our health and well-being? Will teachers and students be required to wear masks in buildings? Why or why not? Marietta, Georgia, just announced that this policy will be in place in their school division next year. Will you be providing means to improve airflow and ventilation in our schools? Will teachers and/or students be offered Plexiglas shields for their desks? What safeguards are being provided for our custodial and support staff, such as bus drivers and food staff? Should a staff member get sick, will it be covered by health insurance or workers' compensation? These are a few questions that have crossed my mind, and I know they're just the tip of the iceberg for what you will be handling. It's my understanding and calculations, opening schools face-to-face instruction will create circumstances for hotspots to emerge. Israel's schools opened for two weeks and then closed. Palm Beach announced they'll be online only. If so, I suggest that schools need to prepare for online...
I don't know if you can offer a concluding sentence.
I submit that our schools need to prepare for online learning rather than hybrid learning, and I appreciate any information you can provide to answer my questions.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Emily.
Hi, you can see me? Hear me? Okay. So I'm Emily Maiton, and I'm from the Rio District, and I'm actually reading a message on behalf of an ACPS teacher. First, the plan presented tonight should have clear details about how you, a self-proclaimed anti-racist school system, will protect your most vulnerable students and families. It is a fact that COVID impacts Black and Brown people much more than white people, so tell us how you're going to protect those most at risk in this community. If you don't have a specific plan for that, go back and start over. Some parents are demanding in-person school, saying that their children learned nothing online last spring and didn't enjoy it. Do they know that leadership told teachers not to give any new material and not to hold synchronous learning times because it was not equitable? We were thrown online with zero training and little parent support on the platforms we were expected to use. We did what we were told, and we did our best then, but virtual learning this fall will be very different and improved. We are already better prepared for what is coming because of what we did before. Working parents have also been upset about what to do with their kids if they don't go to school, but many teachers are working parents, too. If school is virtual, we will also struggle to do our jobs and supervise our own children at home. It's not ideal or what we want, but these are unprecedented times. Why is this entire burden being placed on the school system? There's a global pandemic, yet some people think that they shouldn't have to sacrifice anything. Why are parents not insisting that their own employers make adjustments and be more understanding? What is their responsibility? And if you're a local employer who is not doing anything to support your employees, who are parents during this time, shame on you. For parents eager to send your kids back to school, there are aspects you have not considered. Are you okay with someone who is not a licensed teacher, you're teaching your child all day? Because to break students into small groups will spread around the building. It will take every single adult. Will TAs be turned into teachers? Will specials teachers become subs? Don't think your child is going back to the same environment they had before. Staying in one room with one teacher, no singing in music class, no lunch in the cafeteria, no sharing art supplies, no volunteers coming. I'm almost done. Schools, you remember, it will not happen this year. We all have to adjust our mindsets and expectations.
Thank you, Ms. Maiton. Next up will be Jen Lucas.
Hi, my name is Jen Lucas, and I live in the Ravanna District. My first comment is regarding the issue of school resource officers, or SROs. The way I read the resolution that you passed with tonight's consent agenda is that the board is directing Superintendent Haas to present recommendations for a security plan that does not include SROs, police officers, in our schools. I hope that the board will hold Dr. Haas accountable to this so that we don't lose time on this necessary and urgent change. In addition, it's clear that schools will not be at capacity this school year, so that should make this an ideal time to make the change. We're not interested in a repeat of the more than two years that it took to ban Confederate imagery on clothing, and in this instance, it seems clear that more than half of the board is in support of removing police officers from schools. So I hope you will use the power of your majority to ensure that this equity change is made before schools open. With regard to preparing students for the upcoming school year, I would like to state what I hope is simply common sense. There is a great need to focus the next seven weeks on building up the internet capabilities and technology infrastructure, especially for the 800 students who couldn't access online learning last spring. If this isn't done now, it will be too late at the start of school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Next up will be, I'll say the next three so people know, Dani Theodore, Kristen Gass, and Amber Capron. So first up is Dani. Dani Theodore.
All right, can you see me? Perfect. All right. So my name's Dani Theodore. My family is in the Ravanna District. I'm actually a physician, intensive care physician, that takes care of COVID patients that are critically on the area, and I wanted to address why I think children should go back to school in person, and I think we're all very aware of the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations that they just brought out, saying that children should go back to school in person or in some way, shape, or form of a hybrid. And the things, let's look at what kids will miss if they don't go back to school. Learning, obvious, is what they will miss, but second, socialization. This is where kids learn how to socialize, interact with other people, and it takes a lot of practice and learning. Number three, food. We already know that food insecurity affects one to five children. We already know that food insecurity is affects one to five children before the pandemic. And that's only to get worse as parents lose their jobs. So school lunches and breakfasts are essential and it's a reliable nutritional source for these children. Safety would be next. School personnel, they're attuned to the children's wellbeing and they notice that the children's demeanor or performance changes. And that's how we can catch some of these children that aren't being treated well and these abuse and neglect is being under reported. And then three, mental and physical services. Children need counseling. They have chronic disease management that school therapists and nurses and clinicians can help. And some of these parents lack the transportation or the insurance to get that. When I want to speak about evidence behind why I feel this way. Now, there's no guarantee at all that children won't infect school personnel or family members, but the evidence shows that it's around zero to 10% of the adult transmission rate. It's much lower, number one. Number two, children also seem to be less likely to become infected after exposure from COVID at around half the rate of adults. And the reason I think it's important that we start looking at starting transitioning to an in-person school is because this disease or this virus is changing very quickly. The chances of having a vaccine in the near future are very low.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep. Next up will be Kristen Gass.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Gass and I live in the Ravanna District. I am speaking to you today as a community member, concerned middle school parent, retired school teacher's daughter and proud public school graduate. Public education is something I believe in and feel strongly about. And I commend this board for putting the safety and wellbeing of our children, teachers and staff first while making these hard decisions. While I agree that under normal circumstances, in-person learning is best. The current COVID-19 situation is very far from normal. Therefore, I am strongly advocating for all schools to remain virtual this school year. Additionally, I would encourage the board to develop a virtual learning environment that will provide equitable learning for all ACPS students. While this virus does not seem to affect children in the same way it does adults, there is much that is still unknown, including the long-term effects. There will be significant impact on school communities if we are continually switching between in-person and virtual learning. Coupled with the trauma we will all experience when beloved teachers, staff or classmates, who are also our friends and neighbors, get sick. We are asking teachers and staff to subject themselves to disproportionate levels of risk by returning to in-person schooling. Schools are known as germ factories, even if additional teachers, staff, cleaning supplies and PPE were available. Asking teachers to take on multiple additional duties while also supervising and teaching children, all while wearing masks in aging school buildings with ineffective ventilation, does not provide a safe environment suitable to learning. Rather, we have the opportunity now to focus on building a strong virtual learning and platform, providing an equitable learning environment for all students. I suggest the board focuses on providing comprehensive training on effective virtual teaching methods and provide resources to teachers to facilitate and plan, including time to provide the individualized attention our students expect, need and deserve. That pan, this pandemic gives us the unique opportunity to rethink our priorities. Therefore, I strongly encourage this board to keep in-person schooling closed, dedicate resources to improving the virtual learning environment and teacher training, and only reopen in-person classrooms when it is truly safe to do so for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gass. Next up will be Amanda Capron.
Hi, my name is Amber Capebrin. My child attends Stony Point Elementary and we live in the Ravanna District. Back in 1994, I was the first student to enroll as a part-time student at Albemarle High School. The part-time program allows private or homeschool middle or high school students to enroll in classes and participate in extracurricular activities. Now this fall, parents will be forced to choose between sending their school, sending their kids to school full-time, part-time, or simply giving up and homeschooling until COVID has gone by. Virtual learning was a debacle for elementary schoolers and it was a lot harder than simply homeschooling, as I know from experience. In September, Albemarle is going to see a huge spike in homeschooling among those families with the means to do so. But families shouldn't have to pick. Extend the existing part-time enrollment program to include elementary students and extend the deadline for enrollment beyond August 1st. This will allow parents to send their children to school for needs that are best met in the school while opting out of the virtual education. This will keep school, keep students in the school system, reduce the student load during COVID and allow teachers to focus their resources on the kids who need their help the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capebrin. I'm going to loop back. Our last comment will be Sheika Solaw. I think she joined. She or he?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So I'm generally concerned about teachers, their safety, what kind of measures are being taken? And also in terms of the virtual learning, I'm not so sure what the plan there is. We were given the options and I chose one, but I'm not sure what that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solaw. That concludes our public comment period.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. And thanks to all who spoke tonight. And we just want to let everybody know that Dr. Haas and our staff have been working really hard to develop all, to develop the best plans for reopening using the best data available. And the board is also dedicated to making sure that we have the best plan available when we do reopen. During the presentation on scenarios later on in the agenda, some of the issues that have been addressed during the public comment session will sort of come up during that presentation. So again, we really appreciate all of the comments that have been made tonight and we will be taking those into consideration. And staff also have already been taking some into consideration, most of them. Moving right along, we are now ready for our spotlight on education. And I'm not sure who is going to, okay, Mrs. Carlson again.
God, I'm sorry. I'm talking so much. I'm going to be introducing our spotlight on education. I'll just dive right in. It was nearly a year ago on July 24th, 2019, actually, that the school division announced a nearly $300,000 grant from the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation for a project called Reframing the Narrative. The project also included Montpelier, the historical estate of President James Madison. The news release on the grant said in part that it would provide teachers with experiences, language and frameworks for discussions around a broader, more complete teaching and learning of history that will address the legacies of racism, slavery and inequity. Our superintendent, Dr. Haas, said in a letter to the community foundation that historically, public education has failed on two institutional fronts. By making it possible for communities to be divided into separate and unequal categories and by confirming an account of our nation that obscures rather than illuminates history. Reframing the narrative was designed to address these failures through the design of a social studies curriculum based upon a more complete and accurate teaching and learning of what has been termed hard history. Its product will be a new curriculum this fall, a benefit that will not be limited to Albemarle County Public School students. I might add as a side note that students who drafted our anti racism policy told us during their work how important it was to have teachers in the classroom who opened their eyes to the perspectives of peoples and groups, long absence from their, long absent from their history textbooks. This new, more inclusive, more honest and more useful history of our country, mostly developed by social study teachers in Albemarle County, will be available to school divisions across our Commonwealth and throughout our nation. I cannot think of a more compelling mission for education, nor one that will have a greater positive influence on our future, than the story that will begin to be told to students in just a few months. The Reframing the Narrative Collaborative has been meeting for nearly a year and recently brought together 80 teachers from several school divisions for a conference. The conference was devoted to the writing of its new curriculum and John Hobson, the project leader, is with us this evening to tell us about its progress. And I'd like to ask John to update us on his transformative work and to introduce us to two teachers who will share how their professional lives have been impacted and how it will in turn impact their students.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. And thank you for the board. I'm going to share to the board for this time. I'm going to share my screen if that's okay. And want to confirm that everybody can see the screen. Is that, everybody see it? Yes, my name's John Hobson. I'm the lead coach for social studies in Albemarle County Schools and I'm joined by Adrian Oliver, who's an instructional coach in Albemarle County and a steering committee member for Reframing the Narrative. And Chris Alva Cantone, who is a cohort member of our US History Cohort and a teacher of world history and US history at Albemarle High School. So thank you for this opportunity to give you an update after one year of our work at this. This rather sort of intimidating graphic is going to be the kind of way I'm going to approach how we're going to talk about what we've been doing and the strategies to create a, an anti racist curriculum and a culture responsive curriculum in Albemarle County Schools. We have three broad strategies that we've been following and those strategies are sort of represented in these colors here. So professional learning for teachers is the first broad category. And we've really been trying to focus on teachers to sort of look at their own personal biases and their own experiences and what they bring to the table. And also to take a deep dive into the history to uncover some of the hidden stories. And so that they could be able to tell a more accurate story of history. And so those opportunities have included working with, facing history in ourselves, an organization out of Massachusetts. You can see their, their mission statement here about using the lessons of history to challenge teachers and their students to stand up to bigotry and hate. We were also lucky to be joined by Dr. Hassan Jeffries from Ohio State University and a leading civil rights historian for a community event in the fall to explain why this was important and how we began to go about doing this. It's also involved several field experiences for our teachers. One, you could see us in hard hats at the Memorial to enslaved laborers. And another experience was a tour with local activists and, and academic Jelaine Schmidt for the monuments tour in Charlottesville. So that's been the professional learning that teachers have been engaged in. Another key strategy has been for student field experiences. We have had, and this has been primarily focused on going to Montpelier and using their exhibit, the mere distinction of color, which focuses on the enslaved at Montpelier. We've had over 1,200 students and 87 different teachers go to Montpelier this year. And so you can see that the teacher, students have engaged in their site, including the mere distinction of color, their segregated rail station depot, the Gilmore Cabin, which is one of the, maybe the only fully intact reconstruction era cabins that still exists. And then just engaging in dialogue, because this, this has been a key strategy for us is that we want to not only give teachers the language and frameworks to talk about hard history, but to give students those frameworks as well. And the last key strategy has been curriculum design. So that, you know, after we've done some professional learning, that there's an outcome or an output associated with that. And so as you mentioned in your opening, we had 80 teachers from six different localities. These are represented in a dot density map here from Albemarle County, Charlottesville City, Madison County, Fairfax County, Virginia Beach and Powhatan. Come together and partner with some preeminent organizations, both locally and nationally to design curriculum. And we were being led by Dr. John Lee from North Carolina State University, who is really a guru in inquiry and social studies education. And so we, as a group, developed the drafts of what we call inquiries, 25 inquiries at the third grade. United States History one and two, which is taught at sixth and seventh grade and United States and Virginia history. And I just wanted to give you a kind of a peek into kinds, the kinds of questions that students will be engaged in next year. Again, at third grade, sixth grade, seventh grade and 11th grade. So just take a minute and these questions are going to kind of pop up one at a time. These are called compelling questions and these are what drive these inquiries. And so we're really excited. I think some of these questions could sometimes going to give you that tingling feeling. That's what we're hoping that our students are going to be really motivated by the work that our teachers are designing this summer and we're continuing to, to polish up. With that, I wanted to invite Adrian Oliver, who's a steering committee member and instructional coach, to just share some of her perspective and her experiences this year.
Thank you, John. I do feel like I must name that John has been an inclusive leader in this work, really centering the voices of black and brown educators and scholars and students throughout our learning. I don't think that this work is possible without that, but it's a rarity. And so I want to point to it with some gratitude. I suppose I'll speak to the value that I see in our work and, and for all of our stakeholders. First is the way that I see that this work honors a collective voice demanding relevant anti racist history education. For years, indeed for generations, educators have called for a curriculum of integrity, which tells the truth about our legacies, tells the truth about ourselves. And I think that reframing the narrative harnesses this sort of longstanding power of the grassroots efforts. And, and in part, the urgency instilled in our community in recent years. Teachers know our kids, but this cohort in particular takes seriously our responsibility to do right by them. And I find tremendous value personally and professionally in partnering with bold and brave educators who forge a path towards efficacious educational justice. Honestly, it is thrilling, especially when one considers the infrequency of teacher-led initiatives to be sitting in partnership with educators in this way. Another value that I see is that it challenges teachers to grow our own capacity. Many of us, most of us, if not all of us, were educated within this same system. And so it's fair to say that our own education has been incomplete. There is power then in taking the reins and in partnership with local and national organizations to uncover and unlearn our own education so that we can be better informed, better prepared, better empowered to guide our students to their own learning as well. I think we're better of service as community members when we're supported in that work. I would be remiss if I did not name that we are in, we exist in a moment of physical and emotional and psychic unrest and dis-ease. And community members are really desperate for some leadership that responsively attends to their deepest needs. We heard even in public comment that there's a demand for reckoning and a call for the education sector to grapple with its purpose and function. So that we serve our most vulnerable community members. I think reframing the narrative does this, both in practice and in philosophy, and the potential positive impact of our work is immeasurable. I'll just end by saying that this is joyful work. That working towards emancipatory education is joyful, cultivating educational equity is joyful. Being a change agent in service of vulnerable students is joyful. And uplifting the giftedness, excellence and capacity of all our ancestral wealth is joyful work. And to, to be together with educators as disruptors and storytellers and healers towards resilient, justed minded, emancipatory education is joyful and we deserve explicit support in this as we actualize the policies of the district. Yeah, so I see tremendous value in the work that we're doing here.
Thanks, Adrian. And I think I just will be remiss without saying that the gratitude extends both directions. As you can see, we're surrounded by some of the most powerful educators that I can possibly imagine. And it's been just sort of gratifying to, in the leadership role is just to sort of say, you know, as a gym teacher might say, is roll the balls out and, and let things happen. Because it's been pretty amazing what, what the dialogue that these teachers have been engaging in. One of those teachers is Chris Cantone and he's going to speak, I think, more directly to the experience that we had in curriculum design two weeks ago.
Yeah. So Adrian's a very eloquent speaker. I will do my absolute best to try to say what I want to say. But I'm really lucky and really blessed to be able to talk about the work that reframing the narrative has been doing. And I really want to highlight something that John and Adrian both touched on. And that's that anti-racism. And that's that anti racist educators need an anti racist system in order to do their best work. And the workshop, the IDM, the inquiry design model workshop that so many teachers from around the state participated in. Did a lot of really good work towards creating anti racist systems. Teachers need to feel supported. We hear that. We heard that in the public comment section, part of this meeting. They need to feel like the institution has their back and we are engaging in brave work. The institution. Standing behind us is really important, but then also having the curriculum and having the tools and the lessons to be able to roll out some pretty tough stuff is really important. And so what all of these teachers from around, I believe it was Virginia Beach, Fairfax, city of Charlottesville, Alamo County. Engagement was was what is known as the inquiry design model. And that takes the historical narratives that we've taught and it puts them under a microscope. Reggie Gibson put it really, really well in the mayor distinction of color exhibit. He says, the problem with Americans is that they don't act, they actually hate history. They love nostalgia, but they hate history because it makes them feel indicted. And as a white male, I fall into that demographic where very often. White men are going to feel indicted and the structures of power are going to feel under attack by the systems. But it's really, really important that we engage critically with the things that many of us have taken for granted as a part of the the status quo. And so what these these inquiries are doing is they're going to take the place hopefully over a few days. But they ask a critical question that forces us to look at. Some of some of the things that we're learning in the standards. The question that that my group worked on with the help of Dr. Andrea Douglas and Jory Jaeger. From the Jefferson School, we could not have done it without them was how can we make the criminal justice system more just? And so we looked at the historical antecedent store, modern criminal justice system. And we said, well, based on what this is founded on. Things like literacy tests and poll taxes, the 1902 Virginia Convention, the understanding clause. What can we do and what can our students do? To be changemakers in the community to make our criminal justice system a more just system? I think that's particularly salient given what's been going on in our country. But so many of the other questions put our students in the driver's seat to make those tough choices. And they get to examine and critically look at. Some of the things that maybe their parents, their grandparents, or just someone down the street says, that's just the way it is. And we, what's so awesome about this anti racist curriculum and reframing the narrative. Is that it gives students agency to question those things, but not only that, to make the necessary changes. And I'm extremely excited for what we're going to be able to do over the next couple of years and and for many generations afterwards. And I'm excited to get these inquiries. Because it's going to make our teaching more relevant. It's going to make it more powerful. And it's going to give our students the ability to stand up, give them not only the ability, but the tools. To challenge, to challenge the system, which I think I think is a beautiful thing. And I'm excited. A little nervous, but that's that's part of good education is that we have to be a little nervous about the thing that we're rolling out. So I'm excited and it's. It's good work that we are doing. Thank you.
Thanks. We welcome any questions. I know you have lots of business to take care of, but we'd welcome any questions that you have. Are there any questions from any board members?
John, I see what you mean by throwing the ball out and letting letting your team work on on these issues. I just had sort of a. A question. I think I attended the very first meeting that you had. When you first got the CACF funding, but it sounds, and at that point, I thought it was primarily focused on high school. It sounds like project is much, much bigger than that. How did that happen?
Yeah, I mean, the funding has been dedicated six 12 as far as what we've received from CACF. However, we know that this is not limited to six 12 and we've been engaging in work in elementary. For the last two years, in fact, and we're going to continue to do so, but the the dedicated funding is for the six 12 curriculum. But of course, Alamo County's committed K 12.
Right. I mean, I love that it's now you're talking about elementary school rather than going up and then having to reteach. Reteach the curriculum when they get into high school. So that's great.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have I have one question, and that is, I understand what we're talking about in terms of reframing the narrative from a content point of view. Can you address how that might be reframed from a teaching point of view? And I don't mean virtual versus in person, but you know, just perhaps in the in the delivery.
Yeah, Adrian or Chris, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I definitely can. I think the whole purpose of the inquiry design model, which is kind of what we're using a lot of. Our strategies are kind of based around. Is putting students in the position to ask the questions. And so it actually removes a lot of the burden and the agency from the teacher and puts it on the students. And so. In an ideal classroom, ask that question and every student has a different answer. And then they're able to discuss, they're able to bat ideas around, they're able to disagree. In a really productive way. And so it kind of takes. The onus off of the teacher to deliver this laundry list of ideas or concepts and say, this is the way it is. We're feeling good. All right, next unit, but allows us to sit in the tension sometimes that we see in the standards. And simply in historical narratives and the students get to process that. And work together to come to a solution.
I agree, deviating from a model that is. Instructor driven and that is hierarchical in the sense that the teacher is the holder of all knowledge and that they impart that knowledge to young people. Who are just vessels waiting to be filled. Moving away from that is in itself inherently anti racist. When we affirm a student's capacity, not by giving them voice, but by acknowledging their. Total capacity to have and utilize their voice in this moment. When we look at students and say that. That they are not going to be in the real world one day, but are rather participants actively in the real world today. With a capacity to engage with with its complexities right now, that is in and of itself an active anti racist. Education or sort of an anti racist stance. And so I think that even the inquiry design model, which says that every single one of our students is capable. And beyond capable. Potentially gifted at engaging with complex topics and breaking them into pieces and then responding to that. I think that's in and of itself an anti racist instructional model.
I think it's going to be very interesting when the students go through aha moments. And realize that this is not what they'd grown up with. Eventually, it will be what they grew up with. But and that it's different and that they have. A lot of input and a lot of sharing and a lot of learning to do. With each other and with each other. So thank you all very much.
I have a quick question. Everything you said sounded great and I'm really excited. So this is a very basic procedural question. What does it look like to get this curriculum rolled out? In our schools? Like, how are we ensuring that teachers are using it in their classroom and taking advantage of what's being created?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. And I think that probably speaks to the sort of the logic map. The fourth part is really the implementation. And that's what we're working on right now. You know, we've been thinking about one, a communications plan. About how we're communicating to our teachers, to community members, to students about what, you know, the intentions of this are. But what it is going to involve, and luckily, a lot of our US history teachers were involved in this cohort. So that's sort of number one is like. The vast majority of them were involved and are invested. And so this is not news to them. But what it will involve is rolling out these inquiries. Training them on them, teaching them a lot. They all, a lot of them know the inquiry design model, but just. Giving them some space to sort of unpack these inquiries and prepare and practice to implement these with their children. The the other thing is the board also approved tonight. A book stamped racism, anti racism and you. And I know we have a group of teachers that have been working on curriculum materials that's going to support. 11th grade students who will all have access to the book. The Charlottesville area community foundation has redirected some of our funds to purchase one of those books for every. 11th grade student next year. And so I think that's going to be a really powerful tool. That all 11th graders will have access to and will have learning experiences that are tied to that, that we will train teachers on implementing that for next year.
May I add that I actually think that it looks like more of that. Rolling out this curriculum in the fall looks like saying yes to teacher requests for books like stamped. It looks like teachers going to administrators and saying, I am implementing a well supported, well developed. Curriculum in. That I have been well trained to deliver and I'm getting some pushback from my parents. And I need your support in this and those administrators also knowing that they have board support to do so. I think that it looks like. Comprehensive support. And I think that we are buttressed by the anti racism policy and have the capacity then to. To point to that policy as as the backbone of the work that we're doing here. And and I think that implementation then falls in in line with our stated values. If we're working towards equity for our students, it looks like saying this is an equitable outcome for students and knowing that we're supported at all levels.
Mrs. Lee, did you have a question or comment?
Actually, Ms. Coulson largely took my question. But I also just wanted to express my support. I'm incredibly impressed by this and I was at Dr. Jeffrey's presentation last year. And I remember the question coming up, how can we, how can administrators support this work? And it is literally like getting just supporting, I mean. Taking calls and taking questions and, you know, supporting the work and I'm happy to do that. So I I'm very grateful for all of your work. And it's exciting to me. My son is going to be a fifth grader next year and we're listening to stamped. The Jeffrey or the Reynolds version. And he's so excited because he's saying, you know, these are things that I've never learned. I can't, I'm I'm so excited to learn this. So I just, I feel like we have so many opportunities to be teaching so much more and I'm grateful that you're doing that work.
I want to thank the board for their support and obviously video or the Alamo County staff too, just for their support. Really important and thank you guys so much for your time.
Yeah, we really thank you, Mr. Hobson, Ms. Oliver and Mr. Catan for your work. We've received a few emails even from some of our students who stated. That a whole lot of history that they should have known about African Americans, they didn't know because it wasn't taught in our schools. So we can see that this is really going to be addressing that problem in a really great way. And maybe one other comment too. I'm not sure whether or not, do you have any contact either with the Moden Museum in Farnville? With Maggie Walker House in Richmond or with the Black Museums in Lynchburg and Richmond? For any resources that they might be able to provide for your work?
Well, originally, Moden was supposed to be at the inquiry workshop, I think, because of COVID, they weren't able to participate, but not with the Maggie Walker House, but I would welcome. Partnerships with and the museums in Lynchburg, I would welcome partnerships with any institution and organizations that you all are aware of. Because we would love to expand our outreach. We're limited by who we connect with and who we know. So yes, sort of on Moten, but the rest not yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much again for your presentation and we really appreciate the work that you are doing. Are there any other questions or comments from any other board members? Okay, thank you three so very, very much for what you are doing. All right, moving on right along announcements. Are there any announcements from staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to say that was a great spotlight. Thank you, Ms. Oliver, Mr. Cantone and Mr. Hobson. They are all just amazing educators. We have just two announcements. First will be a quick announcement from Rosalind Schmidt.
Good evening. I just have a quick announcement on our student meal service. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that our student meal service is continuing. I think the last time we publicly spoke about it, we said it was going to be extended through June, June 30. But since then, it has been is is ongoing and will continue through the end of the month. We have modified some of the days and times and locations, so the the website has the most current information. And so I just want to make sure that our community knows that and our express our gratitude for the staff that is continuing to provide that service.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt, and also have an announcement from Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Good evening again, board members. I'd like to bring to your attention. The fact that the Office of Community Engagement has recently completed its culturally responsive teaching. Micro credential and certification processes for this school year. Thirty nine candidates met the micro credential criteria. These candidates were able to show evidence of personal growth. And its alignment to student learning in at least one of the three Alamo County characteristics of what cultural responsive teaching is. Twenty three candidates met the more rigorous criteria of demonstrating a much deeper. Understanding of the three characteristics as part of their certification process. These candidates were able to share multiple examples of how their personal growth through professional development. Actually validated student growth in the three characteristics as evidence to receive their certification. These sixty two completers represented nineteen of our schools. And four division leaders, including instructional coaches, a learning technology integrator. And of course, a doctor, our superintendent doctor Haas, who met criteria for micro credential this year. Now, let me just share with you six examples. Of what we can expect moving forward without the hopefully interruption of COVID-19 moving into next year. Four staff members were validated from Crowe Elementary School and this was a first time school with candidates. Six staff members from Monticello High School were either receive a certification or micro credential. Six from Jack Jewett Middle School. Seven members from Kale slash Mountain View Elementary School. Five from Baker Butler Staff, including the principal Seth Knod as well, the assistant principal Christine Peterson. And this was also one of those first time schools going through the process. Six staff members from Alamo High School, including principal Dara Bonham. Experienced the process. We currently have a total of 140 staff members who have gone through these processes. We will likely, and this is just my estimation, match that number next year. Because of the collective efficacy and evidence based model and the fact that it is working to. Address gaps that we have in achievement. We will be inviting this board to our annual diversity conference on August 7. This will be a virtual conference. And our certification candidates will have the opportunity to present their journey of transforming themselves into culturally responsive educators. We hope that you will be available to celebrate with these outstanding division leaders of change and progress. Thank you for allowing me to share this update and announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. That concludes our announcements from staff.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas, Ms. Schmidt and Dr. Harrison. And we all are looking forward to August the 7th. To the conference. I've attended that along with some other board members for at least two or three years and it's always been very, very productive. So we know that this year's conference will be following in that same line. And we've also heard, received some comments that some people might be having problems with the live stream. We don't think it's on it on our end. And so like sometimes they say on television, the problem is probably with your receiver. So. We hope that it will not prevent people from listening to what's going on too much. But we think it's with your end of the line instead of with us. Okay, moving right along, our next thing, school board and superintendent business. Any business, Dr. Haas?
Mr. Chair, we do not have additional business beyond the what we have on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear a school year scheduling considerations and scenarios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In a moment, I'm going to turn things over to my cabinet, led by Debbie Collins, to make a presentation. On options for returning to school in the fall in about two months. Just a quick fact check. One of the speakers earlier said that the county office building is closed. In fact, the Alamo County Office Building is open. and I go there every day to work, and I've been going there every day for the majority of the time that that we've been out since March. Also, I feel like I should always just point out and remind everyone that as the superintendent, I'm also a parent of a child who attends Alamo County Public Schools and will be attending Alamo High School as a senior this coming year. I also have a graduate of Alamo County Public Schools who attends UVA. My wife is a teacher. We are both career educators, and she is a teacher in an adjoining county, an adjacent county, that has recently announced that they will be returning to school in the fall. So I feel it's important to point those things out, that I'm impacted by whatever decisions that that I make and in conjunction with the school board, and that goes for many of my staff, many, many of the staff with whom I work, as well as school board members. So, school board members and all students, staff, families, and community members listening tonight, I want you to know that your Alamo County School staff, more than eighty educators, department heads, and support staff, has worked very hard using the best and most current information and expertise available to provide us the very first rulebook that we have, and we call it our Return to School Planning Guide. And now the return to school options will be presented tonight that are based on that rulebook. I also want all of you to know that we know you have been very patiently waiting to hear our plans. Thank you for your patience. This is our best thinking at this time, and while it is not written in stone, we are beginning to converge on options. And again, I really appreciate everyone's patience. I know it's not easy to wait. I want to mention that our communications office has developed a return to school website. On the website, we will provide important information to families and employees as we transition to the 2020/21 school year. The new site includes a fully online version of our Return to School Planning Guide. I want to say on behalf of our communications office that we have been painstakingly transparent with all of our stakeholders. In fact, many of the questions that were raised earlier have already been addressed in the documentation that we have provided in our COVID-19 plan, our return to school plan, and if they have not, they will be. For example, we announced more than a month ago that, as a part of our healthcare benefits, any employees that become infected with COVID-19 will have all of their healthcare costs covered, whether it was related to their work with Alamo County Public Schools or not. That was announced in the compass as well as in those documents. So I would ask everyone to pay close attention to the information that we've been sharing. I think that everyone would feel, would certainly feel better knowing much of what we have been sharing. When you visit the site, you will see that we have moved some resources from our COVID-19 management plan web presence to the Return to School website. That will be helpful for families and employees as we transition from reacting to the outbreak during the school year to planning ahead for the coming year. There will be a growing body of information on the Return to School website. Please familiarize yourself with it as you may. I realize that we are creating guidance and plans that will make no one happy, and that is always a challenging work for us to do. On one extreme, we hear that all of our students should have returned to school yesterday, and on the other extreme, we hear that all schooling should be done virtually for the foreseeable future. Most often, in life, the correct path is in the middle, and it will be the path that brings students back to what they need, equitable opportunities to learn and socially interact in person with each other and their outstanding teachers and school staff, while we protect our students and employees with as many proven, legal, feasible, and practical mitigation strategies we can provide, given our unique schools and resources. At the same time, we will continue to listen, and we will continue to learn from our community. We are surveying our employees tomorrow for their views and concerns. One other thing I've learned over the years is that just simply putting out a survey and saying, what are your concerns without any kind of a, a plan in place or anything to give feedback on is often not very fruitful. We are surveying now with with options that employees can actually look at that are concrete and give us their their feedback on those options, which we will certainly use as we, as we continue to work on our plans. We are surveying our employees tomorrow for their views and concerns. We continue to vet our plans with our School Health Advisory Board, the Thomas Jefferson Health District, the local health department, and our neighboring school systems as they are working to reopen. We will use best practices and keep learning new approaches. I ask our Albemarle County and Central Virginia community at large to do the same. I ask all of our residents, if you're with us tonight, there are five hundred and six people right now on the live stream, if you are a resident, if you have children, whether, if you're a student in the school system, if you have relatives in the school system, if you have, or if you are a community with no direct connection to the schools, or perhaps you're just passing by on Route 29, I ask you to follow the best practices as prescribed by the Center for Disease Control to help keep the rate of infection down in Alamo County and Central Virginia, so that our students and employees may safely return to school in the fall, so that they may be safe and feel safe. Everyone plays a part in making this happen, everyone. Everyone can wash your hands frequently. Everyone can use hand sanitizer throughout the day. Everyone can monitor your health for COVID-19 symptoms and take the appropriate steps if you suspect you are infected. Everyone can practice social distancing and simply stay home when you absolutely do not need to be out in public to potentially become infected or infect others. And everyone, as long as it, as long as it is age-appropriate, and you are not impeded by a medical condition, can and should wear a face mask or a face covering when social distancing is not possible or you are in public among others. Wearing a mask is not about protecting yourself. It is about protecting others from you if you are carrying the virus. I hope everyone knows that by now. There should be no debate about this. It is a simple thing to do. Generations of Americans have done so much more to move our nation forward. Putting on a mask is a small sacrifice that everyone should make to protect themselves, their loved ones, and our community, and to get us moving forward again. In fact, with regard to facial coverings, we in Alamo County Public Schools are researching and developing a first draft of a policy for the school board's consideration on August 13th that will require all staff and students and visitors to wear masks in all schools, buses, and offices pending their age appropriateness and 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 any medical conditions that they might have. So again, to sum it up, everyone in our community plays a part in making it possible for our children to attend school. I am very proud of the planning that has taken place to produce the options, information, and planning you're about to see. And of course, I am very proud and grateful for my staff for your work. Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Collins, take it from here, please.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. This evening, we will be presenting information to you regarding our return to school attendance schedules. In addition to the scheduling scenarios, we will be providing information and details on how we plan to return to school. If you can hold your questions, we think that many of them might be answered by the end. We will be happy to return to any slide that you wish. I want to begin by saying, we believe schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being. They provide our students with academic skills, social and emotional skills, safety, reliable nutrition, physical and speech, and mental health therapy, and opportunities for physical activity, among a host of other benefits. These benefits are both short and long-term as we work to develop lifelong learners. As a reminder, we have taken a series of steps to get us to this point. You were presented with and unpacked the Return to School Planning Guide. You have decided the start date of September 8. We have distributed an initial survey to our parents about their plans for next year, and tonight we are presenting the schedule scenarios for for the new year. COVID-19 is a very contagious virus that science is just beginning to understand. We know that at any point in time in the upcoming school year, we might, we may find ourselves in any of these three phases, so we are planning for all of them. As you recall, we ended the school year in Phase 1 in the spring, and instruction was delivered virtually. We did a great deal of learning from that experience, and we are providing professional development and guidance around what virtual learning should and could be for our students. If we were to move to Phase 2, that allows us to bring in some of our students to in the building for face-to-face learning, but the majority of the students would still remain virtual. And you can see on this slide, the priority we would give to some of our students as per the governor's guidance and our own Return to School Task Force. In Phase 3, our current phase, this allows us to return students to the school buildings, and this is what you will hear about tonight. We're going to share our plans for what we believe, how we believe we can bring students and staff back safely into our buildings. Ms. Schmidt will take the rest of the slides.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Schmidt. I'm Chief Operating Officer. Thank you, Ms. Collins. As you're aware, there are many, many resources out there right now that provide guidance on how to return to school safely. I've linked and highlighted some of the main ones here. The CDC Guidance for Schools, the Department of Education has produced a rather robust planning document that we've linked here. More recently, we've had the American Academy of Pediatrics planning considerations, and I've linked our own internal document, which includes additional resources cited as well. And those are just a couple of the ones. We, we know the guidance is ever-changing, and so we are remaining apprised of all the latest information. I also want to thank those community members who have sent additional documents, research, and articles. We are taking all into consideration as we continue to plan. So why are we discussing a new attendance schedule? Public health guidelines will require us to limit the number of occupants on buses and in classrooms to ensure adequate physical distance between individuals. We are using the six-foot distance as our planning module. I realized that just recently, as this week, that three feet may be considered, but we will continue to use six feet as our goal, as it is the safest approach. There will be times when that is impractical, such as on a bus, but I will elaborate on that later, and what other mitigation strategies will be in place. As we weigh our options for what our attendance schedule will be, we follow the guiding principles developed by our Return to School Task Force. I won't go through all of them, but I just wanted to highlight a few. First, all plans will offer a virtual learning option for students who may not feel comfortable returning to school. And second, we will prioritize in-person learning for our youngest learners, English language learners, and students with disabilities. The last two bullets, all schedules must consider transportation and facilities. These are to the departments I oversee. We typically refer to ourselves as the support departments, as instruction is the driver of our school division, but we are in a unique position in these circumstances, that these two factors are dramatically impacting what our instructional, what instruction we can provide. So first, our buildings. Knowing that students will be seated six feet apart in learning spaces, our secondary school facilities, these are our middle and high schools, do not have the physical capacity to accommodate one hundred percent of the students in the building at one time and adequately physically distanced. The schedule options assume a maximum of fifty percent of the population in person at one time. The schedule options would have one hundred percent of our elementary students in person at one time. This will require the use of art rooms, media centers, cafeterias, et cetera, as classrooms. Some schools do not have adequate space to accommodate all the students, so secondary school facilities, again, our middle and high schools, will be needed to accommodate a portion of our elementary student population. Our goal is to spread out and limit the number of occupants in one space. Other considerations are around transportation. This is a visual reminder of how large of a county we are. We are seven hundred and twenty-six square miles, and we have a very diverse set of boundaries. We have small urban schools, we have large rural schools. So our transportation system is very complex. Last year, we had six hundred and forty-six different bus routes. Next year, knowing that we have to limit the capacity, we are planning on putting twenty-four students on a bus. That assumes a child, one child per seat, which takes our seventy-seven passenger buses down to an average of twenty-four. Our drivers typically drive in two blocks, a morning block and an afternoon block. They average about six and a half to seven hours per day with a break in the middle. Most drive an elementary school run and then a secondary school run. So what that means is we do not have a separate fleet of elementary drivers and a second, secondary driver. So our elementary day directly impacts our secondary day. And so this is our current schedule, based on those resources. So with no additional drivers and a limited, limited capacity in our buses, this is what our elementary schedule would look like if we had no reduction in ridership. You'll see, this is a common message that we'll be saying throughout this, is that if families are able to drive their student to school, we encourage and 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 ask them to do that, because if they don't, this is what our schedule will look like. First, the first block of schools in, it's a pink color, would have no change in their, in their day. It would require one trip. They're primarily rural routes who have low capacity already due to the length of their routes. But the two remaining rows would have schools that would require two trips. So what that means is one group of students would be picked up and dropped off at school at seven thirty, and then the buses would go back out to the neighborhoods, pick up additional students, and come back to school. The schools in green, that time between trip would only be one hour, and purple, that time between trips would be two hours. That second trip, again, based on ridership data from last year, and assuming we would transport as many students as we did last year, prevents the possibility of full secondary route. So then we started asking ourselves, what if buses, what if these buses, the buses that serve that first trip, that only trip, could serve some secondary students in some capacity? And more importantly, if less rode the bus, could any of these second trips be eliminated? And so those, the scenario I'll go through are based on those two questions. So with that background, I'm going to present three scenarios. The feasibility of each is based on available capacity on buses and buildings, and each, there's three, and they will have increasing in-person instruction time. The scenarios will illustrate what a student will receive in-person instruction, and all remaining days will be virtual. Students will attend school in groups, and that will be arranged alphabetically to better accommodate family schedules. So first, Scenario A is what we're considering if we have a limited reduction in ridership, and we are not able to serve elementary and secondary students in full capacity on the same day. I'll note, our preliminary survey data indicate that the anticipated reduction in ridership will allow us to do better than this, but I think it's important to put in front of our community to know the value of driving to school if they can. So this is a five-week rotation. Again, knowing that we can't serve elementary and secondary in full capacity simultaneously, we would dedicate the first week to serving our secondary students. If you recall, the facility can only hold half of them, so they're broken into two groups that would be organized alphabetically. After we see them in person, the remainder of their time would be primarily virtual, and then the remaining weeks, we would serve our elementary students. During those elementary days, we would have some capacity for secondary groups, so we could have groups identified such as those that don't have internet access, or English language learners, or perhaps sixth graders. We would have further discussions on what criteria and who we would serve. So if I'm a middle or high school student, this is just one example, I would attend in person that first week, Monday and Wednesday, and then every other Friday, and the remainder of my time would be at home, learning virtually. If I was an elementary student, I would attend school four days per week, four weeks on, one week off, in a five-week rotation. Our second scenario assumes that we do have a reduction in ridership, or we're calling a moderate reduction in ridership, and this would allow elementary students to attend four days per week every week. And this, in this And this, in this scenario, our secondary students, our middle and high school students, would attend one day per week. It would be divided in four groups organized alphabetically and attended person 25. Each day, we would have 25% of our population attending. In both our elementary and secondary schools, due to the unique nature of those in-person days, on Fridays, students will work from home, allowing time for teachers to plan, meet in their professional learning community, attend faculty meetings, hold office hours and communicate with families. In scenario C, our final scenario. And this, in this scenario, is the most in-person instruction we can provide with physical distancing in place. Our elementary students would again attend four days per week. And in this case, our secondary students would attend two days per week and 50% of the population would be in the building at one time. The asterisk here is that further analysis is needed to ensure that 50% of our secondary students can be accommodated when there are elementary students in the same building. So how we decide these, amongst these three scenarios, if we were to, if we were to return in phase three. What if fewer elementary students rode the bus? Well, elementary schools could be reduced to one trip and more secondary students could attend per day. So transportation is one piece. The second piece is we will continue to work with schools to identify space layouts and configurations. As we mentioned, we did put an initial survey out to families to learn their learning and transportation preferences at that time. We realized we did have some technical difficulties, so we appreciate everyone's patience in working through those. We did receive over 7,500 responses to the direct link that was sent out to families, which is about a half of our student population. So based on those responses, over 1,000 students have preferred the virtual learning, the fully virtual learning option. And in response to whether they need transportation or not, 2,000 less responds will ride the bus as compared to last year. We had about 8,000 total riders last year, so that would be a 25% reduction in ridership. We were very encouraged by this response, so we thank you for those families that selected that option. And we know that may not be the most convenient option for your family. Related, we also request your ongoing patience in the fall, knowing that arrival and pickup with an increased car ridership will be a challenge. So here's a summary of those three scenarios. Again, scenario A is a five-week rotation. Scenario B, we welcome our elementary students four days a week and our secondary students one day a week. And scenario C, again, our elementary is four days a week and our secondary is two, two days a week. Based on our preliminary survey data, and again, that data around the reduction in ridership, these two scenarios would be feasible for transportation. I'm optimistic we can figure out the space to achieve scenario C. We want to do some more work and give schools some more time to analyze and be certain that we can do it safely and effectively. And we will know, by this time, we will know that by the time, next time we meet. So I will now pass it back to Ms. Collins, who will provide some additional details about what the experience will be for students in these scenarios.
I wanted to just briefly think about what the elementary school experience and the middle and high school experience might look like. If the student is in person, they would, of course, attend four days per week. And each school is developing their schedules and staff facility configurations. As you can imagine, no two classrooms typically are the same size. So principals are working with building services and will be, begin to work with teachers around, on staff around how they might accommodate the different numbers of students that the classrooms may hold. And that's going to look different per grade level and different per school. So again, that's something the schools will be working on and will be, begin to share with teachers as they develop it. And we have more information about students' virtual experience coming as a virtual learner or in a hybrid situation. A virtual option I wanted to highlight, to some extent, the elementary students would be assigned a virtual teacher. But we are going to shift our practice in the spring. We did asynchronous learning. That means that the teacher made the assignment or, or provide the learning opportunity and teachers were, and students were able to access that and do that at any point in time during the day or during the week. We'll be shifting to a synchronous learning situation. Synchronous learning is learning that happens at the same time for the instructor and the learner. That means that there's real-time interaction between the teacher and the student. So we, we will have for our virtual option on any virtual, in any of the phases that we would do, a daily and weekly schedule. So that students would know when they would be expected to be with their teacher and when they would be expected to have other activities that may be more asynchronous. For the middle and high school experience, there's a couple of things that we feel like we can, we'd like to communicate now so that students and parents would, and teachers would know. We have shifted from an eight-class schedule to a four-class schedule per semester. Typically, in a high school, middle school, we have four classes on one day and four classes on the other day. And for this, these phases of virtual learning, we, and this year, we are looking to have four classes first semester and four classes the second semester. Again, they will be a synchronous learning situation with identified bell schedules. So students will be with their teacher either virtually or in the building at certain times during the day. In person, we're looking at students will be alter, doing alternate days in the building. And the virtual option, they may be assigned a virtual teacher, or they may be assigned a teacher that is, is coming to the building. We have both of those options.
So that's the end of the scheduling portion of that. So as we transition to the next part, I do want to highlight what the next steps are. So tomorrow, we will communicate to staff and families recapping tonight's presentation. It is being recorded, so we will include a video link and we will put this full slide deck on the return to school planning webpage that Dr. Haas mentioned. As part of that communication to staff, we will be surveying them for their feedback on our back-to-school plans. Then, beginning July 20th, we will distribute intent forms to families requesting their commitment, the type of learning and transportation, transportation needs. On July 30th, you have scheduled a special board meeting to finalize these return to school operational plans. And I just wanted to highlight some additional items that are under development and will be used as communication tools as well. A parent guide, a teacher guide, the health plan and the instructional plan that we need to submit to the Department of Education. And then, as Dr. Haas mentioned, a school board policy on face coverings. So that was, concludes the first part of the presentation. The remainder, we would like to provide some additional details and updates on our planning work. First off, I'd like to welcome Dr. Claire Kaiser, who will provide some information about our staff.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Good evening, Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. And I wanted to take just a few minutes today to address some of the, the things that we're thinking about our staff. While we are looking at considerations for bringing our students back to school, we do recognize that those decisions also impact the adults who work with them. And focusing on ways to ensure that our staff stays healthy and safe is paramount. Over the next few days and weeks, our principals will be reaching out to their teachers to talk about the plans for their school. We've had a number of employees, as you heard tonight in public comment and, and through emails, express some concerns and ask questions about the return to school. And tonight, I'd like to share some information that I hope addresses some of the more frequently, frequently asked questions. First, the guidelines that have been put forth by the CDC and other health agencies discuss the importance of face coverings to minimize the spread of COVID-19. Following those guidelines, we will expect that all staff and students wear masks. We will also be limiting the number of students and adults with whom the staff interacts. Through scheduling and reduction of numbers of students in a space, we feel that we are able to do that. But we also recognize that different employees have different needs. And we encourage staff who have concerns about returning to school to talk with their principal or their supervisor about those concerns. We're hopeful that as more specifics are learned about the return plan for a school, that some of their concerns will be mitigated. As always, our human resources team is available to support our staff members and answer questions regarding any leave options or any request for accommodations that our employees may have. We recognize that a number of our teachers may request teaching virtually. Those types of requests will be filled based on those who have, who have health-related risk factors and also based on the number of students who are requesting to have virtual learning opportunities. And in the event that a staff member needs to quarantine during exposure to COVID-19, administrative leave will be provided. The employee would not need to leave, the employee would not need to use their own sick leave balances for this purpose. And we do have a few next steps as well. As you've heard throughout this presentation, tomorrow, our staff will receive a message from Dr. Haas. And included in this communication will be a link to a survey for our teachers regarding the return to school. The survey will ask such things as regarding your comfort level, regarding return to school, any concerns you have, any potential challenges with childcare and professional learning needs. We ask that our teachers take the time to listen to Dr. Haas's message and complete the survey to provide us with information that will be helpful as we continue our planning. We will also be forming both school-based and division-wide planning teams. One of those teams will be a teacher focus group that will provide feedback around concerns that exist. There is a question on the survey where staff may indicate if they are interested in being considered for participation on a planning team. I already spoke about contacting human resources regarding leave options and accommodations requests. I did want to share that because we, that we will not know the student need before the end of July, we will not be finalizing any accommodation decisions prior to August 1st. And we also have heard from a number of teachers concerning their concern around their own care for their own children, especially with the increased number of pre-service days on the new calendar. We are currently exploring how we can make childcare available during the pre-service weeks in August and September, and also on Fridays throughout the school year as needed. More information about that will be forthcoming. As Dr. Haas reminded us all, we do have our communication mechanisms. And so I do encourage our staff to pay attention to emails and our division compass and the Albemarle County website for additional information as we move forward with these plans. As always, we thank our staff. We could not do the work that we do without you. Our students are very lucky to have such dedicated teachers and support staff. And I feel very grateful to be able to work with such people. We, we thank you for your continued commitment as we work through these unprecedented times.
I want to speak about healthy environments. While we know we are promoting families to drive, we want to ensure families that need transportation will have it. And more importantly, they will have safe transportation. We know that no one strategy will achieve that, but rather layering and combining ones will. So here's our plan for buses. First, we will limit the capacity by allowing only one rider per seat, the exception would be siblings or household members who could sit together. We will assign seats and load back to front and unload front to back. We will require face coverings. We will promote health screenings and partner with our families to help that prior to boarding. Riders will utilize hand sanitizer when boarding, will increase ventilation, usually utilizing windows and roof patches. Drivers will disinfect seats and handrails between trips. And again, we will increase parent communication and partnership. We need their partnership in, in making sure that we're socially distancing at bus stops and other details like that. In our buildings, I just want to highlight some strategies. This is not meant to be all-inclusive. But again, we'll require cloth face coverings for students and staff during arrival and dismissal and hallways, and we're not six feet apart in classrooms or other times. We know another key mitigation strategy is to promote physical distancing. So we will do that and limit interaction between building occupants by staggering arrival, dismissal and class changes. We will develop and mark traffic patterns in hallways. We will space classroom seating six feet apart. This will require the purchase of additional desks to implement. Students will eat lunch in their classrooms and we will prohibit non-essential visitors in the building. Signage at entrances and hallways and bathrooms will promote these efforts as well as hand washing and other measures. We will promote frequent hand washing. This requires that we ensure adequate supplies in classrooms and bathrooms. All classrooms will have hand sanitizer dispensers in addition to the ones that have sinks. We will require students and staff to wash hands or utilize the hand sanitizer every time they enter the classroom and frequently during the day. We will increase cleaning and disinfection. All schools have disinfected misters, which allow efficient disinfection spaces. All classrooms will be supplied with spray bottles and wipes or pre-moistened wipes. And we are procuring equipment for onsite generation of our disinfectant. This is an EPA-approved product and the onsite generation alleviates supply chain concerns. So we've had some questions around chemicals and these products are green sealed certified. There's been a lot of comments about ventilation. We have installed HEPA filtration units in all clinics. Our building automation system will be programmed to increase outside air to the extent possible. And we're upgrading our HVAC filter MERV ratings where possible and investigating HEPA filtration units for classrooms. As you can imagine, there's a lot of work underway to ensure that those strategies are, can be implemented. So here's just some highlights of some great work that our staff is doing. Our transportation routing team is well underway and producing routes for various scenarios. We're planning for meals in classrooms and all the logistics that that requires. Our building services staff has done a detailed space and furniture inventory, including full square footage, determine how many students we can safely seat in every room. We're working with a consultant to finalize the ventilation plan, developing a sign package including the floor markings. We're in the process of installing Plexiget shields at reception desks. This is a, we're installing additional sensor activated bottle fillers, knowing that we're turning water fountains off. And all of this is, we're heavy in procurement of supplies and furniture. That's the operations side. I also want to highlight some work from the Student Services Department related to health service. We have designated a dedicated school health coordinator. She previously served dual purposes as a school nurse and that. Now her time will be fully dedicated to this work. The, the team is in the process of developing protocols and processes for topics such as what the student and staff, student and staff health screenings will look like, what clinics layouts will look like to designate waiting, well, sick and isolation areas. What the daily clinic management will look like, how we will manage illness at a school, what the return to school criteria accurate illness would be, and communication templates around all of these. We are coordinating with the Thomas Jefferson Health District to review our health plans. And I know this is the most, probably the most common question we get is what will we do in response to a positive case? We were working in coordination with the Thomas Jefferson Health District and other school districts to create a detailed response plan that will be shared with the public once it's complete and so that we are fully transparent. In addition to those partnerships, we're also partnering with the representative of the American Academy of Pediatrics to review plans as well. Last update is healthy learning.
So one of the things we wanted to make sure that we were, you were aware of is the, the guidance that we are establishing for our curriculum delivery, whether it be hybrid or virtual. The best practices, guidance around hybrid learning, the best practices around student feedback and the best practice for communicating with our families. These are all professional development needs that the teachers expressed in the spring. And we are, we have begun to offer those professional development opportunities in June. I think Sublet told us today that we've already had for, over 400 educators participating in professional development. And we really are, the gearing up begins next week. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on the guidance and the things that we're working on to make sure that all, any of the phases that we're in will be meeting student needs.
So that concludes our formal presentation. I know that was a lot of information, but as you can imagine, there are a lot of details. Pretty much redesigning a school, a school system in these circumstances. Fortunately, we have an extremely capable and talented team of staff who is committed to doing this right. This full slide deck is, will be linked on our return to school webpage tomorrow. And so with that, I will open it up for what questions any board members have. And more importantly, what additional information can we provide at your next meeting on July 30? Thank you.
Are there any questions from our board members? We do thank Mrs. Schmidt, Ms. Collins and Dr. Kaiser for that wonderful presentation. And we can see that a whole lot of the questions that were raised during public comment or doing your presentation. So we thank all of you for doing such fantastic work. And do any of our board members have questions or comments?
Just have one question in, in answer to a text I received. Regarding the return to school website, can that be found on the K-12 Albemarle site? Is there a link on the homepage there? Can that be found on the K-12 Albemarle site? Is there a link on the homepage there?
Yes, there's a banner across the top that should link to it.
Rosalyn, it was kind of in the presentation, and I think you added it since we had our one-on-one meetings about it. For me, a teacher reached out to me today and was asking just about the supply side of things. And I saw you put in there how you're going to, the hand sanitizer and how you're already working on that. What about the masks? And the teacher had a great point. She said it's hard to get students to remember to bring in their books, like they forget their backpacks. So will we have masks to provide them?
So our plan is to purchase both cloth and disposal masks to have on hand for the event that a student doesn't, does not have one or forgets his or hers. Our plan right now is not to issue them. We feel like that's not the best use of our resources right now as many families have them. But rest assured that they will be available for anyone that needs one. That's students and staff.
I'm unclear about the mask requirement. In the classroom, will the students need to keep their mask on in the classroom? I know you're thinking about the desk being six feet apart, but what are the details around that?
So we anticipate that the students are at their desks and their seats and they're six feet apart. They could have the mask off, but that there would be times if they move, get up or approach the teacher that they would have, would be wearing their mask.
And can, can the teacher require them to keep it on all the time or not? I mean, who, who enforces the whole mask wearing thing anyways, I guess is the bigger question?
So the approach that we are, we are working with our principals around the mask wearing is very similar to the approach we took when wearing Confederate imagery. We'll be counseling and working with families and parents around that decision that a child or a parent would make around the mask. But we hope that with our communication and getting out in front of it two months before it happens, that we will have communicated well enough and answered any questions prior to students returning to the building.
I guess this is a Rosalyn question. We, one of our public commenters was the voicing concerns about some of the bus drivers. A, about whether a Plexiglas shield could be put on the bus. And I know that there were some legal or regulatory barriers to that. But she also mentioned the beyond the face mask, the face, whatever it's called, shields. I mean, given that, I mean, the students will have assigned seats and they will be spread out. But the bus driver has the back, you know, his or her back to the students in terms of compliance with mask wearing. And they are in a enclosed environment for a very long, some of those routes you were talking about, an hour or a couple of hours. So are
I can address the I'm sorry. If I could address the first part first around Plexiglas barriers. School buses are one of, rightly so, due to safety concerns, are one of the most regulated structures. And so there are, the state regulations right now prohibit any modification that would put a Plexiglas or even a clear shower curtain. So we do not have options there. In terms of PPE for our drivers, we are expecting them to do a cloth face covering. We know that there will be transportation aids who will be in the vicinity of students who are unable to wear a mask. And in that case, they would be provided with face shields for additional layer of protection. It's not a recommendation that drivers wear the face shield due to safety during driving.
Okay. So I, I just have a clarification because I feel like it's important to say the words out loud. My understanding is that some teachers, based on student desire for in-person classes, will be forced to teach in person. Is that correct? Some teachers who would rather teach virtually will be forced to teach in person.
What I would say to that is we will take accommodation requests through human resources for people who are requesting to teach virtually. As we have the opportunity to see how many students there are, we would accommodate those as much as we possibly could. Conceivably, we could have more requests for teachers to teach virtually than we do student need. But that's something that I think it's probably premature right now to determine that.
I, I guess I feel like it would not be premature if we had spoken to more teachers in the planning process of this. And I find that a little bit disturbing, to be honest, that we didn't get feedback on such an important plan before we saw it. Because, I mean, I think teachers, yeah, some of the questions were answered tonight. But if we had been able to involve them in the process, then we wouldn't have gotten so many of those questions today. And then we would have a better sense of what their capacity is, what teacher capacity is before we rolled this out. So I, I do think that we could have improved that transparency.
Well, one of the things that we wanted to make sure of is that we had a well-developed plan before we communicated it to teachers. And that's what tomorrow is about, is getting the plan out in front of, in front of them. We know it's two months before school starts, so we're just really trying to get enough meat on the, on it that teachers could respond to it. Because up until this point, we were still looking at spaces and trying to make decisions about how, how many students we could bring. Could we even consider having fewer students on buses? So until we had some more information, we could not actually put a plan out there for teachers to look at. So that, we tried to be very strategic and logistical, if you will, in our steps and our approach to this. Because again, I don't, we, having teachers do a survey without any information continues to allow them not to, to know what they're making a decision on. It's kind of what we heard from parents. I'm not really sure what I'm making a decision on. So we just were trying to think about it in a way that made sense and regret that teachers feel like they weren't brought into the process early enough.
I just, I feel like it's pretty telling that we looked at the capacity of things that cannot get sick or die. We looked at building capacity. We looked at bus capacity. And we did not look at our teacher capacity. And that to me is a huge problem with this. And I'm really looking forward to hearing all of the information back from teachers. I want to hear from principals. I want to hear from families about this plan. Because at this moment, I feel like the level of detail in this plan is not something that makes me feel safe. So
I will say that the principals have had conversations around it for the last two weeks. So as we started thinking about space and some of our initial thinking around this, we did begin to vet these plans with them.
Well, they came to us and asked for extra time, so I would be interested in hearing from them about this plan.
Yeah, I have a question about, I think you mentioned that some teachers were included. But how many teachers were included in on the planning and how were they chosen? Were any teachers included?
Yes, teachers were included in the return to school task force. But as you recall, that was our, more of the rules of the game and not necessarily the playbook. We see beginning to roll these, this information out as the way we're going to return to school. So that has the scheduling piece of it. It also has the learning piece of it. So those are the things that we're working on now to make sure that we're prepared to go to school whenever we would have students back in school or virtually.
Okay, but were teachers included in drawing up scenarios A, B, and C?
No, those scenarios were drawn up primarily based on, as Ms. Lee said, on space and transportation because we knew those were the two factors that were compelling us to be able to bring students back into the buildings.
One of the things that I would say is that our educators are very versatile. So I would say in answer to Ms. Lee's question about whether a teacher could come back and not be an in-person teacher for students. I would, I think that because we already have very low class sizes traditionally, very low class sizes, that we, we will have the opportunity if we need to, to increase some class sizes to accommodate some teachers that may not be able to come back and teach live and in person. So there's other roles that, that teachers could fulfill such as grading all the assignments and tests and assessments for their peers and helping them with that workload instead of having those teachers do that. They could, they could support their colleagues in many ways and be part of the educational process. So there's much more to look at. And the other thing to keep in mind, I know that when we talk about planning and looking at space on the buses and space in the buildings and what we can do safely in the buildings, that is all around the safety of the teachers and the students. So to say that we looked at them last is really quite inaccurate. We looked at the spaces that we can provide, the transportation that we can provide in the classroom spaces based on all the guidelines that we have around teacher and student health that's provided by the CDC. All that goes, went into the planning before these other things were put into place. Our staff was not the last consideration that we had. That's completely inaccurate to say that. Everything that was decided was based on safety to begin with. So I think that we need to put those things out in front of the board. Finally, the, the teachers, the principals signed off on a plan that was proposed by the central office staff to start at school after Labor Day. That we, that was not based on their request for more time. We offered three options to everyone and the principals weighed in to say that they wanted to come back after Labor Day. There was no request from principals ahead of time to say that they needed more time for planning.
Well, we got a letter from them saying they needed more time, so I don't understand what the semantic difference there is.
There's a, there's a very sincere semantic difference, but it's also a factual difference. They provided that letter after they were provided the option to come back after Labor Day. We did not decide to come back after Labor Day based on their request to do so. They supported, they supported the decision that we made. So what you're suggesting, I think, and I may be wrong, is that they have been asking for more time. And all of a sudden, we said, okay, you can have more time. That's not how it is. I would like more time. In fact, I think we would all agree that plans like these that need to be made to actually reconfigure our, our schools and our education system and all of our processes really would require more than a year of planning, I would think, to do it really well. However, if, if we are going to return to school, if that's the desire of our board and in the end, it will be the board's decision as to whether or not you want to follow the plans that we have or to not return to school, that will, that will rest with the board. But in our, in our position right now, we're providing the best thinking we have about returning.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying that I want to hear from principals. I'm just saying that there hasn't been feedback. I mean, we've gotten letters from teachers and we've heard from them tonight and we heard from a bus driver. But I want to hear more from all the stakeholders because I think this is the most important decision that we will make probably in my entire tenure here.
I think we
That's probably correct. And I would say probably in the, in the 30 years that I've been working in education, this will be the most decision, most important decision that I will make. And we have been hearing from our teachers. We've received the same emails you have. We have surveyed our community. We'll, we'll be surveying the teachers tomorrow. We'll be working with them more directly. So I would, I would say that you do need to hear from all of our employees, but I want you to rest assured that we've been seeking their input as well. All the bus drivers have been communicated with directly by their department head, Mr. Foley, cafeteria staff, our, our building services staff. And I'm pleased to say that, that the majority of them, with very, very few exceptions, are, are ready to come back to work.
I, I just want to say, I don't, I don't think anybody could question bona fides on, in advocating for employees. Like, I got pretty strong on that. I, I disagree with the concept that they, that the teachers could have been surveyed prior. Because it may, truly, and I'm sure I'll get attacked by this, but you can't ask, you can't ask a question in a vacuum. And a lot of the emails we've received, a lot of the testimony we received tonight reflects that. They were raising concerns. They were absolutely reasonable concerns, but then were already addressed in the plan. And so if we, if we surveyed people prior to putting the information out, we're going to have a lot of concerns that are not relevant because they've already been addressed. So from my perspective, this is the appropriate way to do this, to say, hey, look, this is what we're proposing. Tell us why it works. Tell us why it doesn't. And that gives us the opportunity to then correct it. It's not as if we're coming in and saying, hey, look, this is the way it's going to be. We're saying, hey, look, and I, I gotta tell you, I think the administrative staff has been amazing at this. I think you guys are doing, I mean, you literally are doing stuff in a miraculous way to get this turnaround that this is even conceivably possible. I, you know, I just, as I, I consider myself a pretty strategic thinker. And I, I, I have been overwhelmed the logistics of, of this going back. So I think you guys are doing a brilliant job.
I agree that staff has done a tremendous job in coming up with this plan. But I guess the only thing that I would like to have seen probably would have been at least some teachers in on the planning. I can understand in a way why they may not have been. But I think it would still have been a good thing from the beginning to at least have some teachers in on the planning. Are there any other comments or questions, Kate?
Um, a couple. One is clearly we're, all the planning in the world, we're planning for being, continuing to be in phase three. And, and so I wonder what kind of threshold questions if the situation changes we have. And as one of our speakers or commenters and echoed a concern I've had about 20,000 UVA students returning in the next three weeks. And I've already seen them out and about without masks. And so I'm somewhat concerned about that. So if they do come back and if there is an outbreak, it would probably be October-ish before it would show up. So I'm assuming we're making plans for that in some way, and that's all I need to know. But the other question is sort of out of the plan, but it is in terms of our student representative here now on the board. And I don't know what kind of protocol we have in terms of her participating or giving feedback or insight into her views of returning to, I'm sorry, I've forgotten. Are you Albemarle High School? Anyway, I've, I, I just don't know.
Monatello. She's at Monatello.
At Monatello. So I mean, I, I think that one of the reasons we have a student representative on the board, and I know this is our, all of our first meetings, first meeting for all of us, is to perhaps get, get some input. And you don't have to talk if you don't want to, but this might be an opportunity if you had something to add.
Malani, do you have any comments on, on what's going on with this, the scenarios or any of the plans?
Oh, I can say something quickly about like my opinion, I guess. I know I can't speak for all students, but I can speak for myself personally. Um, I find that an in-class learning environment is much more effective for my learning. If, and speaking in terms of like understanding the material or just on maintaining academic integrity. And I personally think that having a teacher in a classroom environment where I could look at a projector or look at a board or just be taught in a classroom, it can be much, um, it's just more crucial to my learning, at least personally for myself. And as an upcoming junior, I'm going to be taking, Monashell High School, I'm going to be taking five AP classes. And I feel as though that it could possibly be challenging keeping up with the five AP classes. Like with the workload, whether it be because of the difficulty of the classes or just motive, lack of motivation at home. And I'm worried that I might not get the grades that I know I, I'm capable of getting as I'm a straight A student. And then another area of concern just in classes would be foreign languages. I've taken four years of French as of now, and I'm just worried that if we do virtual learning that all of my improvement and all of my learning will, might be lost in that one year. So that's just something I'm worried about. And then I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Burkett. Are there any other questions?
It was also sort of outside the plan. Since we've pushed back our start date at three weeks, are we pushing back the school lunches three weeks as well?
What lunches are you referring to?
Our summer student meals.
Our summer student meal service. Unfortunately, we will have a break between that meal service and when school starts, just as we need to get staff preparing for the school year. What that what that date would be is still to be determined, but there unfortunately will be a break between when we're switching the service model.
Okay, and I have one other question related to the surveys that went out to the parents. Did that survey include the information about four classes per semester? And also will the teachers' survey include that information? Because that's pretty big.
The we did not include that with the parents' survey. And I think that was part of the difficulty in then just making choices around that. We do feel that that the the principals were the ones that asked us to consider the four by four configuration, feeling like that it gave some more support to students. And so that principals have been talking with some of their, some of the teachers around this. So but but tomorrow, the four by the information on the slide may be new to some high secondary teachers. The principals are following up early next week with all teachers regarding what the survey asks and the information around what their plans are for their school. As I said earlier, every school is a little different. When you think about Almarl High School, the the number of students that are there, even if you do 50%, takes different kinds of planning and different kinds of strategies than might happen at Murray High School. So those are the different pieces that the school and the school principals and the school leadership teams at those schools will be coming together and developing and putting out to their staff and students.
I want to I want to throw something out that it 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 may simply not be be possible at this point, I don't know. But it strikes me that our 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 high school kids and some of our middle school kids have a certain liberty on which classes they're going to take and how they're going to develop their 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 curriculum. We want them to have that. But when they chose those classes, it was a different universe. This is not what they signed up for. So I would hope there would be a mechanism. You know, especially with a four by four, I mean, that that's different. And I I hope people have the the kids will have the opportunity to 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 consider those agendas.
And I didn't give you enough information. The letter that's being sent to families has a section in it for families and students that specifically speaks to the change in that arrangement of classes. So that will go out tomorrow to families.
Okay. And and usually you'll probably remember this, Mr. Oberg, but as as the school year approaches, students have more opportunities to work with their counselor to get their schedule straightened out and and sort of juggle their classes around. Just anecdotally, you know, for example, my daughter, one of the classes she wanted to take isn't isn't going to make. So she's working on trying to fix her schedule right now and get that straightened out. That usually takes place all the way up, even after the first day of school, so that they can get everything balanced. And we so after all this information goes out, we'll also be doing intent forms that are going out to find out, you know, more specifically, who's going to ride the bus? Who's not going to ride the bus? Who's going to come back to to do to school virtually? Who's not? So that we can really nail down plans after more information is shared out with the community. So as we get closer, it's it starts to converge and it starts to solidify into an action plan. And again, that's all predicated on us staying in phase three. So if phase three, if we move back to phase two, then we've got, we'll be back using the plans that we we would use for phase two. And so we will have to, there may be situations where we're going to have to dial back.
I just think there there might be, there might be circumstances in which, and I'm just praying to God that at some point we're back to normal and maybe in the spring we're back to normal. There may be classes that it might be better for students. You know, I I was talking about, I was talking about ceramics. And since learning of ceramics is more challenging, but if, you know, if you could choose between, you know, a lecture class, a primary lecture class in the fall and a hands-on class in the spring, I would think I would want to take the hands, take the risk that, you know, it might be better in the spring, but I I don't know.
The high school principals and guidance counselors are anticipating questions and being reached out by students as we progress. As soon as the letter goes out, we know that we're going to have lots of questions. They know that they're going to have lots of questions.
I wanted to piggyback off of Melanie's, is it Melanie?
Malani.
Malani, sorry. Let me write that down, her comments. And and I guess just put it out to the world that I'm really appreciative of the fact that you guys came up with a scenario that includes in-person instruction, especially for younger students. I think our ultimate role as a school board, the reason we're all here is to educate children. And I just, it hasn't been shown to be effective for all our students, especially those that are younger. As it stands, we know that in some schools, over 10% of our students didn't have a single virtual interaction. And it's and it was troublesome to me to think that we would be leaving those students behind. It also, because I have a rising kindergarten, kindergartner and a first grader, what virtual learning looks like with a first grader is a parent doing it with them. And I'm just worried that all this work and that we've put towards equity, we are ultimately leaving our most vulnerable students behind if we don't offer them an option to come into school because they just don't all have a parent that can homeschool them. And I love that we're still keeping the option open for parents who want to homeschool. And I love that we're giving our teachers options to do virtual learning. But I'm also just really appreciative of you guys at looking at in-person instruction. And I know that might not be the most popular opinion, which is why it's great that we have a diverse board of opinions. But for me, the in-person scenario C, I'm appreciative of it because I think it's necessary in order to adequately educate our students, especially the younger grades. I wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Are there any other questions or comments?
Can I go back to the teacher issue for a minute? I I'm just unclear on the timeline of things of when teachers have to commit and sign contracts. Has that already been done? And do teachers know what they?
So sure, so our contract, our most of our contracts, let me let me back up. All of our contracts went out in mid-June with an initial date of having them turned in. I believe it was by the 26th or something like that. We were able to extend the contracts, the contract deadline for people on a continuing contract until Monday in hopes that they would, you know, hear information tonight, talk to their principals, get a better understanding of what was going on and then be able to make a decision. And so the the people that are were that are on annual contracts, those are our non-tenure teachers, those we kept the original deadline for that. And as of as of earlier this week, we had all but about 150-ish contracts back in. And that and that was before the deadline for the for the and for the continuing contracts.
Doc, can I can I add one thing? I thought y'all did something really innovative in human resources this year, too. Could you talk just briefly about the electronic contracts that went out?
Sure. So yeah, so so typically we hand out paper contracts. We've done that for years. And this year with the the closures, we our our human resources team, and I I will give Jennifer Weller Kim the kudos for taking the lead with this part, really worked with the technology departments on the school and local government side to develop electronic contracts that we could send out via email and get and people could sign them electronically and get them back in. And so that is, you know, one of the things I know that it is that while we've got all the upheaval and unrest and unknowns with everything related to the COVID closures, I do think that there are some things that we have come up with some process improvements around, and that is definitely one of them.
I have a another question. Speaking about what we can do effectively, and I don't think we can do all of our learning for all of our students effectively virtually, which is why we want in in person. And I'll bring that up. That's a criticism that I've been hearing a lot is we should all be meeting in person. We're willing to put our students in person. And my response to that would be, one, I am willing to meet in person. I have, I'm still working. I I work with children who are abused and neglected. I still have to go to work for them. But I would say any space where it is effective to do it virtually, I absolutely agree. So I don't want teachers to have to come in. I think high schoolers, there is a little bit, there's a lot more leniency. I'm only worried about the places where we're not actually, we're going to be leaving students behind and letting them fall through the cracks. That's what I'm worried about. That being said, I remember during our one-on-one, I asked about clubs and extracurriculars. And I think you were saying you were still going to try to keep those going. And I guess I'm curious what you're thinking about that is now. I know that the Ivy Leagues just announced they're canceling all sports. And I don't want to be exposing personnel and staff to unnecessary risk. And so I guess I would like to know where the board kind of stands on how important it is to continue to offer sports during a pandemic and have students gather in that way. Because I'm starting
In in fairness, Katrina, canceling Ivy League sports.
Dave. There is a viewer somewhere that is upset that Ivy League sports were canceled. But I mean, I am curious. I don't know where people stand on that because I I could be, I it seems like an unnecessary risk. I don't want to expose people to unnecessary risk. Education is essential to me. Me personally, sports perhaps not essential.
Are there any comments on Ms. Carlson's comments, either from staff or from board members?
I see kids, we live right up the street from a school, and I see kids out doing sports. And so I guess for me, what I would wait to see is the science back on it. I mean, you know, I know it's outdoors, it's probably less risk. Like my concern about this plan is that it's indoors. And a lot, so I mean, I think they've been practicing out there for like two or three weeks. So I'll I'll be interested to see how those sports teams that are all practicing right now, you know, what that leads to in three weeks, four weeks. And also, I I agree that ideally, in-person learning is the best. I I definitely agree with that. I just, I think that there's nothing about this plan that expires. It it's not this dichotomy of, oh, everything must be virtual forever in my life or everything must be in person forever. I think that if this indeed ends up being the plan that is the safest, it's always something that we can implement. You know, there's time to refine it. There's time to get the stakeholder feedback that we want. There's and make refinements based on that. There's there's time. So to me, I feel like it's not one or the other. This pandemic is finite. We will bring kids back. We will bring kids back to school. We absolutely will. I I just, to me, I don't yet feel comfortable with the risk with so much unknown about the about whether children really do pass it around. We know that adults do, and we know that adults have to be in the building. We don't know about long-term effects, and I'm an example of that. We don't know, you know, the WHO even today is saying like, okay, well, yes, maybe it is airborne, as many experts have said. So I just feel like we're in the beginning of a finite pandemic. We're learning a lot about it right now. We're learning at time. And so I just feel like there's nothing about this plan that requires that it be implemented September 8. That's that's how I feel about it.
To your question, Katrina, about the sports, I, you know, on July 9th, I don't know that I've got a good firm opinion on that yet. You know, I I think that's something that, you know, we'll see how, in my opinion, just see how that evolves. If it if it really is something that's pointing towards, you know, a disaster waiting to happen, you know, that's that's a decision, I think, to make, you know, a month out.
John, oh, you don't have all the answers?
No, never did.
I do, but I'm not going to share all of them at this point. I I would, I would, I would just point out that there there is, I, there are, there are, we have teachers who who and 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 non-teachers who are coaches and, you know, coordinators who rely on that additional compensation. It would not by my be my intention that if sports don't occur, that they don't still get somehow to earn their stipends. I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, and I'm I'm perhaps speaking to prematurely as well because there's also students that rely on sports to earn academic scholarships. It's a very, I mean, that's a reason why people do sports in a lot of cases. I guess I'm just curious, you know, I just haven't seen it in the plan, kind of what we're thinking towards extracurriculars. I met, actually met with some students today virtually in the Democratic Club that Monticello or at Almarl and Western. And they were talking how they had plans to continue doing it via Zoom. And I guess I just hadn't really heard her thinking around all the things that we do in school beyond academic instruction and how and what we're thinking about those things. But I'm sure you can add it to the list of things that you're thinking about.
Related to that.
I think we're still waiting for Virginia High School League to finalize what their plans are going to be. So it seems like each week, I I I think they're just trying to really just kind of use up as much time, you know, as they can and still be able to make a good decision. Because I've heard different things like they may just not have the fall athletics in the fall and then skip to the winter athletics and then have the fall athletics and abbreviate their schedules and then have the the spring athletics after that. And and with regard to other kinds of extracurricular activities, I do think a fair amount of them, like clubs and things like that. I I know this is in Almarl County Schools, but I watched a presentation on Sunday morning, one of the Sunday morning programs where a theater teacher had her entire theater program students perform Romeo and Juliet on via Zoom. And it was pretty amazing because they could put on virtual backgrounds and and really act out all the scenes in that way. So it to me, it's amazing, the creativity that teachers and students are going to bring to using technology. And I don't want to speak speak for students because I'm sort of outdated with most of the things that I can do. But they seem to be pretty amazing with the kinds of things that they can come up with, that they can do remotely, that we haven't thought of.
I think Zoom football would be a bummer, though.
It probably would be. All right, do we have any other comments or questions? Just to sort of summarize where I think we are. A survey and or questionnaire will be sent out to parents and to our staff, disseminating the information that we received tonight. And we should receive that information back to us in time to make a final decision on July 30. Is that correct? Anybody?
We should have most of the information back. The July 30th meeting will just be closing the survey for parents. But my guess is if it holds true to what happened in the initial survey, we had a lot of responding early. So I imagine that we'll have a lot of responding early the second pass as well. We will have to do some work with parents and families that do not respond. But the principals are already starting to do that. They know who didn't respond the first time. So they're already reaching out to them to talk with them about going ahead and and thinking about the intent form even before July 20. But we should have most of the information back by then.
And then the employee surveys going out tomorrow, right?
Yeah, that's correct, Dr. Haas. The employee survey is going out tomorrow. We're going to close that on the 22nd. So our target for getting the consolidated information to the board is the 27th of this month. So that'll give you a few days to review it prior to the meeting on the 30th. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I'm sorry that all these, I I don't envy the work that you guys are doing because all these dates and surveys and and keeping track of them. So I just want to confirm for the parents, and and I should know this because I am a parent. Now that we have the three scenarios, how are we getting feedback from the families of students about those scenarios? Because we sent, to Judy's point about the timing of all this, I think we sent out the parent. We only sent out parent surveys about when we wanted to start the school year, right? We haven't given them input on like what, when are we going to know how many want to homeschool? How many want to do all all virtual? When will we know that?
We know some of that now with the initial survey. But having said that, we didn't have a lot of details there. So we we think that parents and and families might change their mind. So that's the reason to do the next survey. So that's the reason to do the next survey within it, more of an intent form that feels more, uh, commit, more of a commitment. So that will go out on July 20.
Okay. So we're doing the teachers and then that will close the 22nd. We're doing the families on the 20th.
And we'll close the end of July, I think, July 30.
Okay.
And just to clarify, it's all staff, right? It's not just teachers?
Yes.
I don't know if this is a question for Rosalyn or Debbie or everybody. Last year we were surprised by the number of students that came to school beyond what our projections were. Do we have any way, I mean, I guess, how, how are we handling that? Are we reaching out, say, if you think you might be coming to school? I mean, I mean, with 300 student, was it a two or 300 student? Access over what we projected, which can throw a lot of plans, uh, awry.
So all of our plans right now are based on projections. So there is some projected growth in these plans. So that's the first good thing. Part of this intent form is to reach all families, even the ones that aren't fully registered, uh, and making a more concentrated effort. So often you'll register, but don't have all your, um, documents in. So you're sitting in a different system. And since this is a concentrated effort to not only do the intent form, but get people fully registered sooner, um, to give us more time to, um, plan. That being said, is, I haven't heard from any principal that is raising the flag saying, oh, I have a lot more registrations than we had projections. And normally you start hearing that. So that, that should be a good sign.
Mr. Chair, I want to ask a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
We've been going for almost three hours and I've been sitting at this desk for 14. Take a break.
We will take one in a few seconds. Few seconds. Can you hold on? All right. So we will be having enough information in by July 30th to make a final vote on one of the options. Is that correct? Is that what we are looking at?
Well, what additional information do you need? So we'll have the survey data and we'll provide further details on all those mitigation strategies and efforts underway. And as those good decisions get finalized, we'll provide those details. So I just, what, uh, whether, what other additional information?
Other information that I would need would be what the survey is going to show. I'm not saying that we need another survey, but I'm saying that we would have the survey results by July the 30th.
Is there, is there some sort of communication strategy around encouraging families who can drive their kids to school to do that? And for families for whom virtual learning works to do that, to leave open the spots on the in-person class for the people who really need it?
Yes.
Okay. And we are using check and connect to check with all of the parents who have difficulty with internet services.
Actually, what we were looking for with internet services is it to be able to invite those children into the building and so that they might be there every day in a high school situation.
Okay. What I'm asking is to get results from those parents.
Oh, yes. Yes. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Yes. Yes.
All right. Are there any other comments then on, um, item, on item that, uh, on scenarios? Okay. If not, as, uh, Mr. Oberknot noted, we now have a break. According to my computer, we have, it's nine 24, right? So we'll reconvene at nine 34. Will that give us enough time?
Cause I'm going to get both my kids bathed and in bed in 10 minutes. Wish me luck.
All right. See, we're bathing at nine 34.
Run.
Okay. Everybody is back except for Dr. Acuff and Katrina, Doc, Ms. Carlson, right? Oh, and Ms. Osborne. There she is. Okay. No, that's Dr. Acuff. All right. Ms. Osborne is here. Okay. So, um, uh, we ready to move forward. Uh, next item, Croze Elementary additions. Ms. Naughty?
I'm Lindsay Snotty, Deputy Director at Building Services. And tonight we'll talk about the Croze Elementary schematic design. The schematic design for Croze Elementary's additions and renovations was presented at the May 28th School Board Meeting for Information. At the June 11th meeting, the School Board directed staff to engage the adjacent property owners regarding the planned additions and renovations at Croze Elementary School. Staff subsequently sent a notice to all adjacent property owners and invited them and any other interested community members to a neighbors meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd. Ken Thacker with VMDO Architects joins us this evening to highlight the changes to the schematic design in response to feedback received. Following the presentation, we seek the board's approval to proceed to the design development phase of the project.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening, everybody. I will go ahead and share my screen if that's all right. All right. Good evening, School Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to offer an update on the Croze Elementary addition and renovation project. We have completed schematic design, the first of three major phases of design work. So we are about one-third complete with design and are still on track to complete our work by the end of the calendar year. When we last met, we, uh, we received, had received a lot of great input from parents, from faculty and from staff, uh, through interviews, small group meetings and anonymous survey responses. All of these things were conducted virtually. And since that meeting, uh, as Lindsay said, uh, the county had reached out to adjacent property owners. Uh, everything that you see here, uh, in yellow is either an adjacent property owner that was contacted or somebody who contacted, uh, us, uh, through letters to the board with comments on the project. This gave our design team much more insight into neighbors' concerns. We had an opportunity to meet with them, uh, through a Zoom meeting. Um, we heard about, um, we talked about our, our decisions, uh, about design adjustments that were already in the process of making and got to hear about concerns they had about the project. Uh, we also incidentally heard about a particularly aggravating light fixture that building services staff were able to promptly address. And I believe that that generated some immediate goodwill with the neighbors. Chief among the concerns that we heard from neighbors, uh, was the proximity of our learning wing addition to the Parrot Branch Creek. In this view, looking east at the front of the school, the new addition is shown built into the hillside facing the wooded creek. Since our meeting with neighbors and in the process of refining our design, we have both pulled the addition several feet farther away from the creek and its landscaped buffer and have removed all planned hardscaping from within the buffer. We have also lowered the overall height of the addition by 16 inches. During the meeting, uh, with the neighborhood group, we presented this pair of slides depicting the existing school in an aerial view from the east with Parrot Branch among the trees at the left and Croze Avenue in the background. So this is the existing condition at Croze Elementary School. And in this view, we have added our, a digital model of our addition. And, and the area that we're most interested in, in is the learning wing addition that is here. Uh, note that this view shows an earlier version of that addition that has since been shifted closer to the existing school and farther away from the creek. More than any other view of the proposed project, I think that this view best illustrates the degree to which we are honoring the 100-foot setback from the creek. Shortly after, uh, that last school board presentation, we received our first report from our cost estimating consultants at Downey and Scott, a firm that has been furnishing VMDO and Albemarle County with location-specific construction cost data for many years. Unfortunately, their cost estimate revealed that our design at the time was significantly over budget. We immediately began a comprehensive cost-cutting exercise, identifying a host of potential changes that could save money. We immediately began a comprehensive cost-cutting exercise, identifying a host of potential changes that could save money. Working closely with the design committee, we identified enough cost reduction items to bring us to a place where we can now say that we are on budget. The biggest move that we've recommended to save money is a contraction of the Learning Wing addiction, addition. Here is our former site plan with Croze Avenue at the bottom of the screen. And here is a zoom-in view of that older site plan. And here is the same close-up of the latest site plan. The blue line at the right is the one-hundred-foot water protection ordinance setback line from the creek. And you can see in this view that we have honored that line with our addition and also have removed any planned hardscaping from within that buffer. Here is the level-two floor plan, the top floor of the school. You remember that we talked about entering at the upper level of the school and then stepping your way down the hill. The dashed outline there on the right-hand side represents the former footprint of the addition. This is the latest level-one floor plan. The numbers and letters that you see are indicative of possible grade assignments to classrooms. And then lastly, here is the new level-zero floor plan at the bottom of the scheme. So some highlights of our, of our cost-cutting measures that we employed to bring the design back within budget. Obviously, a more compact footprint is cheaper to build, both in terms of the building and site costs. Compressing the building's height, I believe, will save us significant dollars, although not square footage. Questioning replacement has to do with recognizing that a lot of the existing facilities at Croze Elementary, even those that are thirty years old, are in really great shape, and that's a testament to the county's good care that they've taken for the building and the way that it was originally designed with high-quality materials. And then preserving essentials just has to do with taking a hard look at the CIP, making sure that that's what we are furnishing in the plan, and then really questioning additive requests on top of that CIP. So finally, our schedule for the design work, that is, everything that is above the red line in this chart remains unchanged. The construction work, or everything that is below the red line, is still pending a forthcoming decision this fall to bid the work in the winter and commence construction in the spring. I will be back, assuming that we achieve approval tonight, to present our progress with design development, our middle phase of three phases of work, probably at your October board meeting. So we'll, we'll have one more chance to take a detailed look at the plans at that time. Are there questions that I can answer tonight?
Any board member with questions?
Um, at one point, you, you talk about contracting the addition, and then later you said without sacrificing square footage. Is, or, or am I misunderstanding what you said?
No, we, we did a, a contraction which essentially brought the addition closer to the existing school.
Right.
And the, the point about reducing floor-to-floor heights, which is just about right sizing that dimension so that we could save even eight inches on two different floors. We don't feel like we're sacrificing ceiling height. We're trying to compress the, the elements above the ceiling, below the floor. So, you know, we're getting into the degree of design where we can begin to question those things and, and ask ourselves if we can be more efficient with space and volume.
Okay, I was just, I just didn't want to have fewer square, I mean, we're planning for the future, right? So we want to make, I don't want to give up square footage, and it sounds like that's not what you were talking about at all.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I just want to thank you and Roslyn and the whole team that you took the time to, to work with the, the neighbors. I know that they appreciate it, and I appreciate it.
True, yeah, that is true. You mentioned that the building was now completely out of the buffer zone for the creek?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, it's a, but, just sort of a, maybe a silly question, but are the buffer zone and the flood plain sort of synonymous, or how does one compare to the other?
No, they're, they're not synonymous. The buffer zone is, is a horizontal distance to keep buildings and other physical improvements away from the creek, which is a, our drinking water source here in Croze. That creek is not identified as a flood risk.
Okay.
Very little of the basin above upstream from Croze Elementary School to that creek.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
And I'd like to, first of all, say thank you for hanging in there with us tonight. I know you, you came on a little bit later than, than was originally anticipated. So with the, with the buffer from the, from the creek, was there always the hundred-foot buffer intended there, or is this something that came up or was perhaps negotiated with the, with the, the neighbors in terms of what it was they were looking to accomplish?
It's always been a requirement. I think there's some debate about what is allowed within the buffer, and the county engineer worked with us to come to a compromise where we agreed to pull all of the hardscaping out of the buffer, which certainly makes for a completely pervious surface.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from our board members? Okay, if not, thank you very much, Mr. Thacker, and we'll be looking forward to seeing you again in October.
We, we have to.
Are we looking for a motion?
Uh, yeah, right, to move forward.
I move that we approve the schematic as provided by Mr. Thacker.
Okay, move by Mr. Ober, second, by Ms. Acuff and Mr. Alcaro, that we approve the plans. Any discussion on that motion? All right, is Mrs. Johnston still around to take a voice vote on this? Or either Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes, thank you, Ken.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks again. Thank you.
Mr. Page, could I could just thank Mr. Thacker again and his team, but I also want to acknowledge Ms. Snotty. I tease her about her luck with late meetings. Two weeks ago, she was presenting to the Planning Commission at this late hour, and then a lot of that operational planning work I highlighted in the last presentation, she is a key role and a key leader in that. So I just want to personally acknowledge her and thank you for hanging this late.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Snotty.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Ran a little bit over time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Thacker. All right, we're now on our last, last item on the agenda, the assignment of the public comment strategy to our Communications Committee, which consists of Mrs. Lee and Ms. Dr. Acuff. So could I have a motion on that?
I move that we assign the Communications Committee to work on the public comment strategy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Ober, second by Mr. Alcaro, that we sort of send this proposal to our committee on communications for strategies related to public communications. Any discussion on that?
I just want to say I'm really excited for what you ladies put out. I think I was on the Communications Committee for a while, and there were a lot of good ideas that, that, I'm really excited about the energy, and I'm, I'm looking forward to what you guys come up with.
Right. Okay, we look for great things from that committee.
But if you mess up, we will team you.
We will, we will. All right, so we ready for the vote, there being no further discussion?
I do, I have another discussion point, just since it's hard to get everyone together. I would, one, since we're on the topic of communications, I would love to do a town hall. I met with a teacher who was saying Zoom makes town halls much more accessible, and this is a prime time for getting community feedback, and I don't know if Dr. Acuff or Ms. Lee could help get that organized, or if Jennifer could help us. I would love to just have, we could have three town hall meetings in the next, I think, three weeks pretty easily.
I think that's a great idea, and I, and in the past, I know Mr. Giromeda has offered to help with those, so I think we can work with him. I think that would be good.
When I suggested that, about a month ago, I got played online for it. I'm not gonna.
Really?
That was then, this is now.
We'll take that up and get the ball running on that idea, right? That'll be a part of what you bring back to us, right?
Yes, you're the boss.
All right, so are we ready for the vote? All right, Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, we're down now, down now to other business by board members, so our superintendent. Do we have any other business on the agenda?
We do not have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Board members?
I just want to say how much I appreciate Jana's, Graham's work the past couple of years. I think you guys have been a great team, and I am really appreciative. I know how much time you guys put in. I know that I, I, I truly, truly appreciate it, and I really am looking forward to, to Graham and Katrina continuing that tradition.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Alcaro has been a very positive influence as our board chair, so again, we do thank him.
Thank you.
Any other business?
I just want to thank Malani for coming and sitting through our longest School Board meeting of the year so far. It was, it was.
Bad timing, Malani.
Sorry.
I'm happy to be here. Quicker than every three months.
Yes, thank you, Malani, for being with us.
Okay, hope we didn't keep you up too pa, far past your bedtime, Malani.
Past my bedtime.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so.
It's not like it's a table anymore than all of us.
Okay, if no further business in our meeting, July ninth, School Board is adjourned.
Bye, everybody. Great job, Graham.
Thank you.
And everybody. Superdoo.